Good afternoon. Welcome to the mid-month meeting with the Liberty County Board of Commissioners. Good to have everyone here. Good to really see more people in the room. We hope to be able to improve that as the time goes by. Thank you for coming and thank you for participation, and we look forward to having a good meeting. I'm sure some of you asked me, is the meeting going to be brief? It will be as brief as we all allow it to be.
All right.
Ball is in your court. Ball is in your court. Mr. Brown, has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir, it has.
Thank you. I saw today's Coastal Curry covered our last meeting, so they're doing a fairly good job without being hit just from the, get the recorded messages from Washington on Facebook. If you will, let us all stand for invocation and prayers. We ask Mr. Joe Mosley, our Assistant County Administrator, to lead us in our invocation and our prayers.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day and your bountiful blessings. Father God, we thank you for these group of individuals who dedicate their time and energies to improve their community. We pray that you give them divine insight and revelation tonight as they engage in the business of this community. And we thank you and we praise you. Forst in Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in the liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Thank you, sir. Resolution for our 2022 budget, would that require a public hearing, Mr. Brown?
No, sir, don't.
All right, we've done all that, all right. This is where the rebel meets the road.
We have done all of that. Grab those lights real quick. Thank you. I'm just going to briefly-
Let me say this, because since I brought it up, state law requires that there are public hearings prior to adopting your budget, and what we just determined that we've abided by the state rules, so we're going to go ahead now and hear and adopt the budget.
June 1st was our public hearing where we actually entertained any questions or comments, and we went through a very detailed presentation. So this just kind of summarizes that, so that we can just highlight a few things for you. So this is going to be the proposed budget that you will adopt tonight, or that you'll vote on to adopt tonight. The proposed budget, a little over 41 million. Our current budget, 38.8 million, for an increase of 2.38 million. It's a little more than a 6% increase. You can see all the various revenues here and the changes that we've projected, some up and some down. Some of the biggest change would be right here in the intergovernmental revenues. I just want to let people know why. This year's revenues included the CARES Act money, and next year's will not. So that was the biggest change in that so far. This $1,796, like I said, included the $1 million of CARES revenue. It's not recurring. Of course, property taxes, we hope, will come in this high. We will get the digest hopefully sometime in August or September. And then your charges for service increased pretty significantly as well. Here are your expenditures. The largest one, of course, being salary and wages. You can see some of those. Capital outlay, down significantly. We only budgeted about $748,000, $749,000 for capital outlay, and we have identified to use fund balance for that. And fund balance is actually a negative amount showed in our expenditures, and that's why, oops, sorry, that's why this amount right here is so much lower. Also, this amount is so much lower because we've included the recreation in the general fund this year, so there won't be a transfer out, which is where those normally occur, right in here. And normally, recreation gets about 1.4, 1.5 million in operating transfer out, but now they are going to be part of the general fund. There won't be any operating transfer out. The general fund has absorbed all of their revenues and all of their expenses. In this budget that you're proposed to adopt, these are the new items, personnel and benefits in the general government, judicial, public safety, public works, and then we also have longevity and half of a year of merit budgeted. So these are for new personnel and their benefits for these different functions. And then capital items, as I said, we have capital items for these various, we have things budgeted for these items. We will be supporting those through the use of fund balance. And items to consider, we are going to continue to fulfill our county, our obligation for countywide fire services. What's included in some of that personnel, where you saw public safety, is the increase of 18 more full-time firefighters. They will be brought in on a staggered basis, just like we did this year, but hopefully by the end of next fiscal year, we would have 18 more full-time firefighters, for a total of 36 full-time firefighters. We are going to be transitioning EMS to a county function and a county operation. That will probably be, bring on about another 25 full-time folks and maybe another 20 to 25 part-time folks. Significant increase to our workload here. We will continue to monitor general fund revenues, and then we are going to be talking about how we're going to use the American Rescue Plan. We have gone through that process of filling out all the required forms, and the chairman and Mr. Brown have signed off on all of that. We've submitted it, and we're waiting. We're waiting, and I check every day to see if that money has been deposited yet. We're slated to receive about $11 million. It can only be used for very specific things. We have to come up with a plan and a budget to be able to use those funds over the next four, okay, about next four years, so by 2024. We will need to consider the digest growth. Again, we don't know what that growth will be. We don't know what the real growth versus the reassessed growth will be, so we'll have to look at that, because you're going to adopt your budget before we actually know what we have for property tax, which is always a challenge for you. And these budget recommendations are based on the best estimates at this time, and once we get the digest and go through all those calculations, we can determine at that time whether or not the digest will support the budget that you adopt. And if it doesn't, we can always come back to the table and make those adjustments. We've done that in the past. We always make those provisions every year when we adopt the military, if there are things that need to increase or decrease or adjust accordingly. That's all I have at this time, unless somebody has something specific about the budget that you need me to answer before I read the resolutions.
Ms. Kim, Ms. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I heard what you say, we can come back and make adjustments, but what happens once we're already allocated out to the constitutional officers? Can we go back and take back from them?
No, you can't. You can't take back from them. You can ask them to be part of the team and submit cuts, which in the past, some of them have. The other thing is, also, the money, the funding for the capital and those type of merit and longevity are held in a separate department, so they're not put in those departments yet, and those funds will be released when Mr. Brown sees that the cash flow is there to do so. So we're going to fund the operations, but those new items are not going to initially be put in their budgets until we actually see what the digest produces.
One other question. On the, I heard you mention something about the merit. Could you go back over that, you and either Mr. Brown, and explain that procedure?
So the merit is based on a successful evaluation that will be turned in by the end of next January, and then once all those evaluations have been turned in and compiled, you'll look to see whether or not you can afford, or who is actually eligible for a merit, and what you can afford to do, whether it's one step or two step, depending on how a person scores. So it will be based on a successful evaluation of a person who has been in that position for at least one year.
So that guideline for the merit is established from the department head through Mr. Brown, through, where does it start at? Where does the guideline start at for receiving the merit?
I guess it starts at, you have to be in the position for at least one year, and then you're going to be evaluated by your department head, and that evaluation is a four or five-page evaluation, depending on your position, whether you're a supervisor or not, and you're going to be ranked on very specific criteria, and you're going to be ranked from zero to five. And then collectively, those rankings for each criteria are averaged, so that you can come up with an average score. Somebody scores, you know, 2.5, or somebody scores 3.6, or 4.1. Collectively, you'll determine what that ranking is, and then based on that, you'll distribute merit. Did that answer your question, or do you need something more specific?
It's a little fuzzy, but go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Brown, you want to try?
Ms. Chair. The board has outlined the procedure for the money distribution. You're the ones that decide if merit's available, then it'll be distributed, and if it's available for distribution, and the guidelines for distribution of that money.
Okay.
So the money's kind of held over in a department that is controlled by Mr. Brown, and so once those evaluations come in at the end of January, we would hope to have everything wrapped up and maybe possibly be able to issue merit in February, maybe at the end of February. That would be the tentative timeline, I would think.
Is that, Ms. Chairman, is that included, it's not included in budget? We'll come back and revisit that after the digest.
No, it's in the budget. It's in the budget, but it's one of those things that you can always look at to say, we don't have the money this year.
No, we want to have the money. It's time for them to-
It's time for them to-
They need to-
I'm just, in the past, that's always been one of the things that is eligible to be cut.
Right, yeah, but we don't want to cut it this year.
Okay.
And I think, I thought that the board made that loud and clear-
Yes, and it's in there.
At our last meeting, so I don't-
It's in there.
It's in, it's in the budget.
It's in there.
Okay.
Just give it an official presentation.
Okay, well, I just wanted to-
It's in the budget.
Official, on record, that they're getting it.
There's also a COLA slated to start effective July 11th, which is the beginning of the first full pay period in July. So there is a 2% COLA that everybody, on scale, will receive effective July 11th.
July 11th.
So that's in the, in the budget.
And get that, COLA, and that's in the budget, and then, and the merit will come in February-
Right.
After these evaluations.
That's correct.
And we want to make sure that these department heads continue to give evaluations annually so that the board can approve merit to move them where they need to be.
Okay.
Right? We made that clear.
Sounds like a great plan.
We all on the same sheet of music.
Trying to be consistent.
That's right. Other thing I had, Ms. Chairman, was the, I know we're standing up a fire department and the EMS, but I was concerned that the SRO agreement, that is not in the budget.
It is in the budget. Mr. Chairman told me to put it in the budget.
It's in, it's in the budget now, even though we haven't approved the-
It's in these numbers. Yes, yes, ma'am.
But we haven't approved the agreement.
I was told to put it in the budget, so I put it in the budget.
Well, that's good to know. I asked the right question.
The agreement's on our agenda.
Right, but the agreement's down there, and the agenda's up here, so, you know, I don't know that I can approve a budget if I haven't approved the agreement.
Is it under public safety? Is that where it's at?
Yes, sir.
How much is it?
So I came prepared, because I had a feeling we were going to discuss this.
Oh, really?
Okay. So originally, before we considered the agreement between the Board of Ed, we originally budgeted $74,000 in the school resource officer budget, and that would have been for a single resource officer, plus his cellphone, and fuel, and maybe a little bit of vehicle maintenance. It would have been $74,000. And we also budgeted to receive $62,975 from the Board of Ed, which would have been 10/12 of that budget. So that would have left us with about $11,000 shortfall. Now with this new agreement that is being proposed, we are budgeting $262,000 for school resource officers, which will be four, and we are budgeting revenues of $258,000 to receive from the Board of Ed, which basically leaves $3,601 as a shortfall. So you're actually-
And more being for our book.
Exactly.
Right. You're actually getting more money.
Yeah, I know. All right, so let's, we should move on to that.
But if, but if we, I know Kelly's back there, what are your level of confidence? When I sent the email out saying, you know, the sheriff's going to absorb this and this-
The $29,000 he was going to-
And so, I didn't get any feedback, so we went and moved on, because Kelly's ready to present the agreement, and we can, if we need, just move the voting on the budget after Kelly's presentation, if that's what we need to do.
That's what we want to do.
Yeah. Let's do that.
Yeah, I think so. Ms. Chairman, I have a question. Kim, the budget that was for public review-
Right.
I guess a couple of weeks ago, I think was on the table in here, and maybe even, was it in the newspaper and everything?
It was on the website, and it's on the table.
So that one, this one is different from that one?
This one is different from that one that was on the table, but the new one, as soon as we made those changes, we posted the new one on the website.
Okay, okay, so, but the first one that was out, the one that was out for the public to review, this one is different from that one.
That's correct.
And part of the difference is the change in the-
The three new school resource officers and the amount of revenue that would be put, so we had to adjust both expenses and revenues, yes.
Yeah.
That's correct.
I think we do need to at least, you know, talk about the agreement before we approve that, because I was thinking that the numbers were the same that was here, and then two weeks later, it's different numbers.
She updated it.
Okay.
Oh, I can sit down, and we can skip straight to that.
Kelly back there?
Yeah, he's back.
Ms. Chairman, before we drag him in here, public safety, is that going to also be the EMS folks?
Yes, sir.
Is that going to be included in it?
EMS, public safety is EMS, emergency management, all the sheriff's departments, animal control, the coroner. I think those are it. Those are all part of public safety.
And that's under the expense, the $1,161? Is that what we're looking at there?
The $1,161 is a combination of not just the sheriff's folks, but it's of increases for all of those things, because there's a couple other departments, public safety departments, that are also getting some changes. And I, it's in your, it's in your budget books, but I can go get the detailed list if you like. It was just too much to put on one slide.
Yeah, but I mean, that's going to cover the EMS transition, and it's going to cover our 18-
Firefighters.
Firefighters.
Yeah, fire was the other one, too.
And-
So that 1.1 million is the 18 firefighters, the school resource officers, the other deputies that you're fixing to approve, the promotion of a deputy director, like after half of a year, and maybe another promotion of another deputy director, half of a year, too. I'd have to go back and look at that.
Position for, or-
Yes, juvenile court. Well, that's in judicial.
Oh, correct.
I was trying to think of just the public safety.
I'm just covering them all, but-
Right, right.
Okay, and out of that, then you're saying that all you got to worry about with SRO is just the $3,000, that's going to be the-
$3,601.
That's going to be paid for, that's the vehicles, the whole-
No, that's just the difference between what we budgeted for SRO and what the Board of Education is going to pay for SRO.
So-
$3,000 is a difference. Now, outfitting, initially outfitting those three SRO deputies, the sheriff said he would absorb that cost in his budget. So the initial outfitting, the guns and the holsters and that sort of stuff.
Cell phones.
Cell phone, thank you.
Right.
All that stuff is, he's going to absorb in his budget collectively. He's, collectively, his budget's probably total more than $13 million, so it's probably reasonable that he could absorb $29,000. And I don't know if y'all got a copy of the analysis that I had put together. I think it went around in an email.
It did.
And-
You did.
Yeah. And so basically, like I said, the SRO budget went from $74,000 to $262,000, but the revenue went from $62,000 to $258,000.
The revenue, as in?
As in what we get from Board of Education. That's, we call that revenue, when they pay us.
Right, I understand that, but that's what you're saying, that's coming from the Board of Education?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So-
And it'll be earmarked for this particular item?
Yes, we bill them, school resource officer.
But we don't bill them for the cars or nothing like that?
No.
No. Is there a reason for that?
If there is, I don't know it. I didn't-
Who would know it? Joey, who would know that?
You guys. It's in the agreement that y'all approve with the Board of Education for the MOU, for the SRO program.
That's the one that-
That you're going to vote on tonight.
Well, actually, the old one, that's been in existence now for-
How long?
Seven, eight years. They didn't provide cars.
No, they never provided cars.
Or provide uniforms under that either.
No.
Well, I mean, that's what I'm saying, I don't know, so you, y'all been in contact with the whole board on that, Mr. Chairman?
The whole board, no.
Well, that's what I understand, none of the board members are aware of it.
The whole board, uh-uh. Not the whole board, no.
Mine don't. They would have to approve it if we have to approve it, the over $200,000. They would go before their board.
Honestly, I asked that question because the agreement has the chairman signing, and the sheriff signing, and the superintendent. So I asked the question, well, why wouldn't their chair lady have to sign it? And it was understood that their, their board gave the superintendent kind of the authority to do that. That's what I understood.
The new agreement does provide the sheriff's-
Yeah.
With the chairperson on the Board of Education?
Lily Baker, yeah.
The one that was in the email the other day did have Lily Baker.
Yeah, it had, yeah, I remember her name on it.
It provides that all parties-
Come up and give your presentation. Trying to get us to vote on something, we ain't even heard a presentation.
And the new agreement does provide that each of the parties has, if you can hear me, has appropriately approved the agreement, and that requires it be presented, like we're doing here in open session. But if they've already given the authority to the superintendent to execute it, and that's in their minutes, then they've satisfied that requirement.
It would be in their minutes where they've discussed-
And given him-
These three SRO.
Yes, ma'am, I don't know what form the discussion took, but there should be something in their minutes where they gave the superintendent the authority. They could have given him broad authority to enter into agreement with the sheriff, but, you know, more appropriately, the agreement probably should be presented to them, and they approve it, but I'm not going to interfere with the Board of Education's affairs. You know, they approve matters as they wish.
Yeah.
But I should, I should say, I think the budgetary issue has been presented tonight, and I think in my email I explained, really, this agreement is largely between the sheriff and the Board of Education, and that this board should focus on paragraph 6B, and it makes clear that regardless of what you do tonight, if you approve the budget and allow the SR program to go forward, you're not obligated to approve it in future fiscal years. So each year, a budget will be presented to you, like you do with any other constitutional officer's budget, you'll review it in the context of your comprehensive budget and your budgetary process, and if you think that the program is, I think, well, I shouldn't say that, I think everybody acknowledges that the program is very beneficial and a worthy program, but if you think there's sufficient funds to be allocated to the program, then like you're doing tonight, or may not do tonight, it's your free to approve it or not. So you're not obligated in any fiscal year to approve the SR budget. Each year will come before you, each year you'll be free to approve or decline the budget request. And that's your really only obligation in this agreement, is one of budgetary approval.
Then why do you tell those three employees?
You know, I guess that's a matter for the sheriff to manage personnel, but I think probably, you know, like a lot of jobs, especially in law enforcement, they're grant-dependent or agreement-dependent, so I'm sure he'll make provision for that. And I guess, you know, I think, I think you saw this in the agreement, but with respect to cars, the cars will remain owned by the county, and they'll be used by the sheriff. And, you know, the SR officers will only be assigned to the schools for 10 months of the year, so for the balance of that year, those officers and vehicles and equipment will be dedicated to other law enforcement activities, independent of the school system.
Right.
And I don't have a problem, you know, it just seems like that the sheriff should have came before us during budget presentations, rather than waiting a couple months after. And Kim, will you come back to the, can you tell me how many deputies we approved for the, can you refresh my memory on-
I got that, too.
How many deputies we've already approved for the sheriff's department since January 1st, or thereafter, in six months?
17 positions.
17 new positions.
For an annual impact of $962,000.
And he got that when he first came into office, 17 positions. And we had to outfit them, give them new cars, and now three more on the back of a Board of Education agreement. And I don't know why three of them, 17, couldn't be placed over there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
We have Major Kirkendorf back there, he might could-
Never mind.
I had a question, Mr. Chairman.
Did I hear you, Commissioner, first?
I do.
Come be next, sir.
I'm just trying not to get into weeds, because, Mr. Chair, you know, we're trying to watch the time of this meeting.
We spending taxpayers' money at this meeting.
And I totally understand, I understand that. I'm just trying to, is the question about what's the SRO, or is the question about the amount of deputies that the sheriff has already put in place? That's where I'm at now. I mean, if we already approved, you know, his deputies, the 17 or 18, so be it. I think the question that's on the table now, if I'm correct, is about the SROs and the protection of our kids. That's, that's the most important thing. And then, from, from my understanding, we have a better deal. We were paying $11,000 for one, now we're paying $3,000 for three.
Four.
I apologize, for four. I'm just trying to figure out, like, I mean, what's, what's the true issue? I'm just trying to get down to the issue, for time purposes.
Is it the money?
Well, listen, I'm like you, let's not get too much into the weeds, did you say that, sir?
Right, the weeds.
We just said it.
No pun intended.
But certainly want to answer everybody's question that they have, and I guess your question is valid, sir, but right now, this is about the SRO.
That's right.
Well, and, Ms. Chairman, if you don't mind, my question about the SRO is I understand the need, and, you know, we're talking about the cost. I think that the SRO program, I've talked to Kim, and we provide an officer for the city of Flemington, they pay 100%, and there's a, plus a markup for administration fees. I've been in and out of City Hall this week for various meetings, I've talked with the city, and they provide a SRO, I guess, to one school, Bradwell, and it's 100% reimbursable by the, by the board. Now, we were not, and I think Commissioner Walden just asked the question, you know, the conversation between the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners, or the sheriff officer, all the parties involved, wasn't, wasn't a public meeting, it was, I guess, a phone call, or you bump into somebody at Walmart, and you say, hey, let's do this. I don't know how that happened, but there's a cost associated with it, whether it's minimal or whether it's enormous, there's still a cost associated with it. And, you know, we are asked by the Board of Education with public funds to participate in that. Now, I want the kids to be safe. I want people to be safe all over Liberty County, but what, if that's what the Board of Education desires, then they should present that to the board, and then we get with the sheriff to see how he can, you know, meet those obligations from that, from the- you know, meet those obligations from that, um, from their, you know, grant them their wishes. But it's, um, one-hundred percent funded by some, one-hundred percent plus by some, and then they fall short with another. And that shortfall is not a whole lot of money, as Commissioner Frasier said, but to me, it, if that's what they wanted, then, um, they should work out an agreement to fund that. That, that's my thought.
And, and, and I, I, also, I agree with that, but even if you look at, at our last contractual agreement, it was a ten-twelve. But now this is twelve-twelve, correct?
Twelve, zero.
Right, well, so technically, we're getting two months free from them, am I correct? Or am I reading that wrong?
Well, yes.
You're right.
The deputies will be free to perform other duties during...
So, 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 so what I'm saying, e- even with that agreement, in, in my opinion, it makes that whole, correct? I, I don't know.
I agree.
The, the agreement was not discussed, is, is my, is my concern. I mean, you know, if, if someone wants that, they, they should, um, Clinton Wells, he presented his budget before the, this board. And, um, if that's what someone wants in their budget, they need to present that, and then there's a vote, a, a up or down. Um, I don't, I still don't understand, and, um, protection of the, the kids in the school is paramount, I got grandkids that go to school here, but, um, if that's what they want, then that's what they should pay for.
So I, I will, I will say this, and, and I know the budget presentations are very short, especially when you talk about a budget for an entire year for departments. So that little ten or fifteen minutes that we come for you, that we now come before you again to talk, isn't a lot of time. But I will at least say this, that the initial request that came in from the sheriff's office asked for forty-three people to include three SROs. So originally, this board, when we went through all the work sessions, for, for those of you who are eligible to attend and able and participated, you know what was red marked? No, 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 no. So initially, we did not approve the three SROs. We did not approve any more jailers, we did not approve any more narcotics or detectives. Um, they asked for many more deputies, and we did not approve all those, civil service processes. So there were a lot of things that were not approved, but it was at least in the initial request. Now, was it highlighted, and was it gone into, like, great detail, especially about the reimbursement? Probably not. I, I mean, I don't remember it being that way, and, and maybe, maybe the fact that you weren't going to approve them kind of spurred that conversation to get this agreement in place, to make sure that we could approve them. I'm, I'm just guessing, I don't know, but...
You're right, we didn't have a contract, an agreement, we didn't have anything in place, and Kayla was working on that with the school system, to, to get that.
Yeah, I think they had agreement, but it was an outdated agreement that was based on past...
And if I remember correctly, excuse me, cut you off, even in previous administrations, certainly with Sheriff, I'm gonna call his name, Sheriff Sykes and Sheriff Martin, they made those agreements with the, with the school system. It wasn't Liberty County, um, working all that out with, with the SRO officers.
We just, as long as I've been with the county, and that's been since two thousand and two, we've had one School Resource Officer. And as long as I've been here, um, so I don't know how long ago this originally started and how it was determined it was only one, you know?
I think in the Sheriff Sykes, wasn't it?
It had to be, 'cause we, we, we had a SRO on when I was...
No, that was all the way back with Don Martin.
Right.
I'm sorry, I meant, I meant Martin, I meant Martin.
When I was at Liberty, we had one.
Right, and that was the one.
I was thinking Martin. But they always worked that out. Eddie, you're trying to get in, I'm sorry, then we're gonna close this.
I, I hope everybody in here knows what SRO stands for.
School Resource Officer.
A lot of acronyms.
I'm sorry.
But I just wanted to say, um, first of all, I mean, my wife taught at Liberty, and there, there was one SRO officer at each school, at, at the high school.
High school.
That was all there ever was. And I don't, I mean, I don't have children that go to school over here, and mine's, I hope they don't ever have to go back, but I, my, my question is, Kelly, and it's just like the chairman just said, these deals, uh, these agreements was between the sheriff and the Board of Education. And that's the way it needs to stay. It don't need, it don't even need to be, we don't need to be involved in it. It was between the city police in Heinzville, when Bill Kirkendall, Harlan Deloach, George Stagmire were chiefs between that department and the Board of Education, okay? That's the way it was. And that's, that's the way it ought to be. You got too many heads on this thing, we don't need to be involved in it whatsoever. The sheriff had it in his budget, if it was in his budget at the time, then if it wasn't in his budget, then what we had out here was not...
The, the one was in his budget.
Right. Then that's the one we voted on. I mean, we put this out here for the public to see. Talking about needs versus wants, I mean, it's not what the school board wants, it sounds like that's what they need. And they're the ones that need it, if they feel like they need deputies down there at the school, then they need to be able to fund it. If they feel like they need PE teachers, they fund the PE teachers, they fund the chemistry labs and whatever else. They don't go to anybody else, Kelly, and it ain't no reflection on you, I appreciate you bringing this and sending it that late at night at one o'clock in the morning. But anyhow, I, I read it, I wanted you to know that, but I do know, I do know that there are school board members that are unfamiliar with this conversation. So, I mean, that's fine, there's some things that the chairman does that I really don't care to know about, and there's some things that I would like to know about. This is something that, I mean, I'm sure that everybody's done to due diligence, but this board don't need to be involved in anything other than if the sheriff says he needs it, then we ought to try to fund it, and we did, that one. Now, to come back and say we need two more, then I think that's something that we can wait toward the end of the year. I mean, school's gonna start, they'll know. I mean, I can't possibly believe that, uh, it's gonna make that big a difference. Um, and I, you know, I'm, I'm for protection of the kids, but I don't want us to be here when we've already looked at Clinton Wells, and we've looked at other people in this department, and in this county, under Joey's administration, and we say, we can't give you a whole person, we're gonna give you a half of one. Well, I'm, I really don't wanna know what that looks like. So, right now, we funded it at one, and I think that's where we need to stay on it. Earlier on, when the sheriff first came in here and Bill was sitting here, he talked about a CHAMP's program, and this was something he was gonna put in place. But the school board, T-Splosh, and Mr. Chairman, you can correct me.
T-Splosh.
T-Splosh pays for, E-Splosh pays for what? E-Splosh was voted on in this county, and in there it says, "Safety and Security." It can be used on safety and security.
E-Splosh is a little bit more lenient than Splosh.
That's what I'm saying, it's safety and security.
They get to pay a little bit, they, 'cause they can buy books, they can buy, they, they, theirs doesn't have to be per se capital, I...
Right.
Right.
It can provide for...
Now, I don't know exactly what it can, but I know it's, it's different.
It can provide for school buses, it can provide for whatever, and it can provide for SRO officers. That stands for School Resource Officers, okay? For everybody that don't know. But it can, it absolutely can. I mean, I just, I don't think, you know, we, we've funded them before, but, you know, when the E-Splosh passed, then we need to be, we can't continue, this board can't put, you know, that much more on the taxpayers. I'm just not gonna do it now, I mean, I'm sorry. I don't mind him having the one like he had before, even though I know it, it's, when you walk into a school and the first thing you see is a policeman, it's just like coming here. But, um, there's other things that we need to have for our departments instead of some, some of these other wants. This is a needs-based budget. And that's it, thank you. I was six, I think we started on the first and come all the way around.
No, I, I understand your concerns, Commissioner, but I want to make three things clear. One, the, even in the past, the board has always been a party to the agreements, uh, simply because you're indispensable in the budget process, so that's why you're a party. And really, that's your only involvement, as I mentioned earlier.
Money runs through us.
And then, second, with respect, with respect to the awareness of the Board of Education, I assume that all the members are aware of the SRO proposal, but if they're not, the agreement does provide that they have to approve it if they haven't to date. If they've approved it, that's wonderful, but if not, they do have to approve it in open session, much like you, you have to with your contracts. And then, third, again, I, I'm not familiar with the timeline, but I suspect that following the initial budgetary presentation, that's when the sheriff had additional conversations with the superintendent to try and obtain additional funding, and I think when that funding was, in the sheriff's mind, secured, I think that's when he came back and revisited the issue and presented it with you. I didn't want you, in other words, I don't want you to think the sheriff neglected the process or the board or disrespected you in any way, I don't think that's the, the fact at all. He's regularly updated, you know, county staff and myself and the process, and the reason we have a new agreement is simply because the old one was deficient, uh, for a number of reasons. So it better protects all the parties, but also protects the Board of Commissioners and gives you much more discretion with respect to annual funding of the SR program. So I just want to make those things clear. Of course, it's your decision, and you, you, that's, that's your, your job to approve these budgetary matters, but that's why you're involved in the process as well.
Well, Mr. Chairman, and then this'll be the last time. I hate, you know, I sat up here and I came to every budget hearing, every budget hearing. I've been on the Finance Committee for over twenty years, since I've been elected, this the first time that a budget has been changed like it has now. And, you know, that's not the budget that I sat up here and worked on.
I understand, last-minute amendments to the budget are never, um, a wonderful idea.
Well, you know, it's, that's not the budget I worked on, it got thrown back out on, it's on social media, it was not out there on the table for somebody to walk in and look at. And then now, I'm looking at it. That's not what, that's not the budget that I worked on.
Let me say to Mr. Chair, Commissioner Thrift, I hear what you're saying.
You worked right beside him.
A budget, there has been amendments to a budget.
That's correct.
Okay? And let me remind this board, two years ago, when the sheriff then came to this board and said he wanted twenty thousand dollars more, this board approved it six, uh, six to one. It was not an issue. That changed the budget. Last year, in November, when he came back, and this board approved to pay his Medicaid B, Medicaid B supplement for the entirety of his life, that changed the budget also. So if someone can come up and ask for something personally, why can't we look after our kids better than what we are?
Seventeen new hires since January, moved three of them.
We are...
I'm, I'm, I don't know if I'm done or not, I'm just, I'm, I, I, I don't, I don't know. It's, it's sort of like going into the store and it's a BOGO sale. It's like, you could buy one, but you get half off on this one, but you still just buy one. I, I, I don't...
Commissioner Jones was trying to get in.
I don't.
Say my speech.
Good evening, um, Ms. McLaughlin, Kelly, I'd like to, first of all, thank y'all for the job that y'all do. Ms. Kim, you in particular, um, I tip my hat to you. These numbers, to me, is mind-boggling. Uh, this is the first time I've been a part of this budget with this board. So, um, I, being the new kid on the block, um, I do a lot of listening to learn more, so I'm usually silent, the more I hear, the more I learn. Uh, the question that I had is pertaining to the budget, uh, we recently amended the budget prior to us trying, uh, going forward to adopt this one. Do you have the numbers for that previously amended, uh, budget?
I thought I...
That we recently amended?
I printed that out.
Uh, the reason I asked the question...
It was about three-point-one million in total, but that collectively represented a lot of things. And for the sheriff's departments, of that three-point-one million, four-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand pertained directly to the sheriff's departments, out of that three-point-one million.
And the reason I asked the question, because I knew we are in the process of adopting this new budget. Did we go back and revisit the amended budget, that three-point-one million dollars? Did we, I guess, go into the new budget and retrieve that three-point-one million out of this new budget, or how was that paid for?
No, but when you amended this year's budget, this is the only budget you amend, however, going forward, what you've now set in place, i.e. the seventeen new people, are then carry forward in your next year for a whole year, because those seventeen people were only budgeted for part of a year, this year. And that's why I shared, um, I know the last time we were here, Commissioner Thrift wanted to know, she had already said she wants to know about how many people and what the cost was, so I, I knew to came with, I knew to come here with that. So, um, collectively, an annual expense of those seventeen are nine-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, but for this year's budget, we only had to amend the sheriff's portion, four-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand. That helps it all.
So that's money from the, uh, recently amended budget?
Each, each year stands alone. Each year, budgeted revenues and budget expenditures stand alone. The only thing that I would say, if you talk about a carry forward, is when you identify to use fund balance for anything in any given year. So next year, we are identifying to use the current year fund balance that we will have at the end of the year to fund capital requests next year. And we won't really know what our true fund balance is, but, um, and you'll see in your, your report tonight, right now, it's about six-point-four months worth of, or four-point-six months worth of operational...
Six-point-four.
Is it six-point-four?
I'm on it.
Okay, I, I couldn't remember if it was four-point, I don't have it right in front of me. Six-point-four months worth of operational expenditures. So going forward, seven-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand to be covered by the use of fund balance for one-time expenditures isn't unreasonable. Um, that's, that's not unusual, and, and we've done that before.
We've done it, right.
We, we have done that before. So when you talk about using next year's funds for this year, or this year's funds for next year, each budget, revenues and expenditures stand alone for that year. So on July one, the current budget that we're doing, the one that you're gonna be hearing me talk about, the May expenses, that's gone. You'll start all again on July one. And that budget, that four-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-dollar amendment that you did this year turns into nine-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand and something next year.
Mr. Chair, just, uh, and with the SROs...
Nine-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand.
Uh, even, even with the patrol cars, since, since we're going to this, the enterprise thing, one thing, I mean, but, but some of our fleet, we're still gonna keep, right?
Right. Yes.
Temporarily.
Temporary.
And, and so over the five-year term of that lease, those will rotate out, but there will be some that we are, have on the contract to move out, once we sign the contract.
Right, but the, the SROs could use some of those vehicles?
I think, and I won't get into the inventory of the sheriff, but is, uh, I, I think all the vehicles that are listed on the list right now are already permanently assigned to folks, so I'm, I'm almost a hundred percent positive it will take three additional cars to that inventory.
So we would be added to them?
You would. You'd be added to the five-year inventory. You can't really look at it as a one-year payout or anything like that, 'cause that car will probably stay on the road for an average of two years, and it'll rotate and be gone, it'll be sold, and that money roll back into the five-year plan.
I mean, and I mean, trust me, I, I respect, you know, all the decisions of, of my fellow commissioners, and, and I understand, you know, there, there are issues, but my, my main issue is, uh, more importantly, the children. You know, uh, that's, in, in these difficult times that we've been living in, you know, the last five, ten years, I mean, mass shootings are happening almost on a daily basis. You know, we, we just had a situation over in Savannah last week. I mean, it wasn't at a school, but it was still, it's still happening. So these situations are getting a, a lot closer. And that's when it comes where you have to question, at what cost? I mean, what, what cost do you put on, you know, the protection of, of, of our kids? I mean, what... I mean, what, what cost do, do you look at it and say that, you know, hypothetically speaking, you know, none of us ever want anything like that to hit home, but it's, it's hit home all across America? And I would hate for someone to bring up this, this video from the 17th of June, and we're debating over some SROs, that technically, we're getting a better contract, we're, we're getting more and paying less over the $3,000. That's, to be honest with you, that's the last time I'm going to even talk about this SRO thing. Mr. Chair? I don't know where we're at. I don't know if we moved this.
If I, if I... Yeah, now, now we're on D.
Yeah, if, if I could, if I could just say this, and Commissioner Frazier, this will be my last time, the only thing I'm saying, if, if the school board, who is responsible, of all things related to education, if this is what they want, then they should fund it. That is, is not, is not anything against, uh, the new sheriff administration, it's not anything like that at all. I mean, you know, we, we got kids right now, right down at Stafford Park, you know, equivalent to a school during the summertime, playing games. And some crazed gunman could do whatever, you know. But at, but at the schools, the protection of the kids at their school, um, the, the sheriff department does not provide CDL drivers to drive buses for transport, because stuff happens on the buses as well. And, and you're at the schools. And if they think that, for whatever reason, it's not all the schools, it's not all the schools, uh, you could go to the pre-K center, and you know, God forbid, you have some domestic issue, and you've got five, four and five-year-old kids there. It's not just reserved to a high school or a middle school. I mean, it could happen anywhere. But if the school board, if their goal is to protect the safety and security of the children at our public school system, it's my thought that they should fund it. And if they need help from the sheriff to provide deputies there, they should pay that cost. That's all I'm saying about it. It has nothing to do with nobody or nothing else. When, and they say we need security, you go to law enforcement and ask for security, you said, "How much would it cost me to do it?" They said, "It costs this," and you write the check, and it's taken care of. That's, and I'm finished with it.
Right. And, and I was, but it's just, but, but, but what I'm saying is, and, and I, I hear that, that we're saying that they're not funding it, but technically, they are, because we're, they're only using these deputies for 10 months, but they're paying out for 12 months.
But tell them to pay for 10.
That's the bad deal that we were in.
They need to pay for what they get, is what I'm saying.
All right. On, on the floor now is item D. You're right, even I was getting confused, as to where we're at. So it's the SRO agreement, then we're going to go back to the, to the resolution for the budget. So, so are there any other questions from Mr. Attorney Davis about the SRO agreement before we bring that to a vote?
I'm not prepared to ask you any question, Kelly, because I'm really about, this thing is way too long for me to read, but you're, you're saying right now that if anything happens, it's not, that we're not liable?
No. And, and I mentioned that last meeting, and maybe earlier tonight, but I want to make sure everyone understands, your, your sole involvement in the process is budgetary. And so the only provision that pertains to you in the entire agreement is provision 6B, which sets forth your budgetary discretion, really. Not your obligation, but your discretion to review each fiscal year, the requests that's made by the sheriff, and to approve it or not. And so that's, that's your total involvement in this agreement. Now, the, the agreement is much longer than the original, but for good reason, and that's been discussed with the sheriff, and I think he's discussed that with Board of Education. So, but your position, at least with respect to the new agreement, is much improved over the last. It's not simply an obligation, but it's...
It's an annual agreement.
Memorialize is your discretion, your authority.
Does it say how many we're going to budget for? Does the agreement say how many SRO officers?
It is. It says, it says four.
It says four.
But each year, you'll approve it. For example, this year, you're approving it based on the conditions that were just described by Ms. McLaughlin. So it's contingent upon the Board of Education paying the entire wages and benefits of the four officers, and the county basically being responsible for those items that were mentioned by Ms. McLaughlin. And that might change each year, and each year, you'll be in a position to approve or disapprove.
But for this one, it says four, and we don't know if the Board of Education has approved this contract.
No, and they have to. They will have to.
They will have to, but they have not yet.
I don't know. I can't speak to that. All I know is that the older agreement that I saw, that was proposed for this upcoming fiscal year, had both the signature of the superintendent and the sheriff. So I assume that the superintendent is acting with authority, but I don't know. And again, that's, I'll leave that to the Board of Education.
As a lawyer, what would you say?
I, I would say yes, but, but, but this agreement, they make a warranty and representation that it has been approved as required by law. So when they sign it, you'll know that, in fact, it has been approved as required by law.
And as a lawyer, if, if a SRO gets in a jam...
No, you're in no way responsible.
In the car or nothing? I'm talking about the car?
No, well, the cars are insured by the county. So if there is an accident involving a car, you would be liable. If the, if the deputy himself is negligent in some way that exposes the, the sheriff to liability, the sheriff would defend the case through his, through our insurer, much like he does in the other case. So, but I, I should mention, that is the reason for a more comprehensive agreement, because creative plaintiff's attorneys recently have used the inadequacy of, of this, of this agreement, or the absence of the agreement, to try and impose liability on the parties. So the reason for this restated and improved agreement is to, one, eliminate that possibility entirely. So again, it sets off the responsibilities of the parties much clearer, limits your obligation and your involvement in the process, and does not expose you to any additional liability, except for, you know, the consequences of any negligence, which might be attributable to the deputies. That's, that's just part of business.
So next year, probably better if the sheriff or whomever bring this before us first, so we know how, there may be five that he needs. So it needs to be voted on before we start working in the budget process.
Yes. And I, and we'll confirm that with the sheriff after, but I suspect the reason that wasn't done is because he probably hadn't reached his agreement with the superintendent, at least with respect to funding. But I promise you after this, I will ensure, I will commit to ensure, to work with the sheriff and the other parties to make sure that the agreement is presented as part of the regular budgetary process and not brought up at this last moment. No surprise in the budgetary process or not.
Yeah. It was a work in progress, and as Kim said, it was there, we just xed it out. Then the sheriff was willing and, lack of better word, willing and, you know, negotiating, speaking with the superintendent, and that's the deal they worked out, which has happened to come to us last week, I guess.
Mr. Chair. So even though it is last minute, it's, at least fiscally, you're welcome to...
So it wasn't, it wasn't there, it was just not completed. It was just...
Right. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, are we ready to vote?
I think we are now.
Okay.
We are now. All right. So Chair, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we, Liberty County Board of Commissioners enter into agreement with the Board of, Liberty County Board of Education for a total of four SRO School Resource Officer for the next year.
Is there a second to the motion?
I second it.
Motion and a second, that we're into the agreement, and it has been, where'd he go? Yeah. Maintain your post, sir. My kind attorney and a finance director, I think you guys have done a good job of doing that. And, you know, as we say, once you know better, you do better, you know? It was certainly not our desire or plan to have it finalized at last minute, just took that amount of time to get this agreement and get it all signed, and get it back over here to us, as well as for Kim to get her number she needed, so that we had those final numbers that we asked you for. So when the numbers came across, and I saw the, the difference, I think 29 and so grand, I said, "Sheriff, you know, you got a budget, kind of like Kim said, you got a big budget." He knows all of this, he said, "I'll do it. I'll do it." So that's why I sent that out to you all, said, "Listen, I've discussed with the sheriff, he has agreed." You know, and I asked, and I said, "At least that you're supporting my email." So I thought we were good. I thought we were good. Not, not good as in it being late coming to us, you know, but as the attorney explained, it was a work in progress that just happened to be finalized last week, so...
And if I could just take the liberty of qualifying the motion to have it approve the officers consistent with the budgetary presentation of Ms. McLaughlin, and to authorize the chairman to execute the SRO agreement on behalf of the county.
Okay.
All right. What you say? Any further discussion?
Just one, Mr. Chairman. We're, we're voting on the SRO agreement that Mr. Davis presented to us.
Yes, sir.
And that one includes funding, joint funding, but regardless of how much, but joint funding between the Board of Education and the county commissioners. That's, we, we're voting on the agreement, not so much the number of...
Four issues.
We're vote, we're voting on the new agreement that you gave us, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that, that's what we're voting on, the agreement. And that's, that, that's in the agreement.
Yes, sir.
But it's the agreement that we're voting on. Okay.
All right. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Those opposed? I have four against. Yeah. Agreement's going to take some more work, sir.
Now you're going to go back and fix that budget?
Yes, ma'am.
The one that I worked on?
Um, so, Mr. Brown, I guess it would be kind of futile to vote on this budget unless you make some sort of contingent, you know, absent the funding, we'll, we'll approve this budget absent the funding of three SROs and the revenues for those three SROs.
The first one that was out on the table, what's that?
Revenues and expenditures.
The one that was out on the page.
Yeah. Because your, your, your budget resolutions don't specifically give a number, but what, what we can say for the record is that you could approve the budget absent the three new SRO officers and the associated revenue with those three officers. So it goes right back, like you said, to the one budgeted officer and nine, 10, or 10 twelfths of the funding for that officer. So is that, Mr. Brown, is that...
Yes, sir, yes, I think that's fine.
Okay.
The contingency that you mentioned earlier that can change during the year and go backwards or forward, so the money that we saved, this $3,000 that we saved, that Commissioner Frazier had talked about, that we were going to actually, I mean, that was all it was going to actually cost us.
Right.
So there's $3,000 that we can use somewhere else, do we? Or is there more money than that?
No, no, sir. Now it costs you $11,000.
Yeah. Well, I'm just saying, how much more, how much more money?
Your total revenues and your total expenses will come down by that 258, 258,785 dollars.
But that was money that was going to be refunded back from the Board of Education anyway, correct?
That's correct.
Right. So now we have one, and we're going to pay $11,000 towards that one, because we shut this down, right?
That's correct.
No, no, we get one SRO for $11,000.
Yeah. I hear you.
Right. Yes, sir.
I'm with you.
Okay, so, just for the record, because like I said, the, the resolutions themselves don't specifically list numbers, but for the record, you're going to approve the original budget that was presented during the public hearing, that includes only one SRO officer and funding of 10 twelfths of a month, 10 twelfths of the year for that officer. So you're going back to the 74,000 in expense and 62,000 for the revenue. Because that's what's in that budget that's on the table, the budget that you worked on.
I still don't understand how you changed the budget, and we already had a public hearing.
The public hearing, you can always change the budget between the public hearing and now.
In between those, in between those times?
Absolutely. And that's really why you have the public hearing.
We, we already had the public hearing, then we changed the budget.
Right.
Then we put a different one out.
Right.
On social media, but not on the county.
So legally, legally, you always reserve the right to have a preliminary budget submitted for review, you have your public hearing, you entertain comments, and legally, you can always go back from here forward, if you wanted to, and change what you put on the table. That's done quite often, following the public hearing, following public input, either to add or take away from the original presentation.
Well, I think we need to let the board know we do that.
Probably not to this magnitude, but yes, we've done it.
We've done it.
Yes. There's always been some tweaks.
Always something, yeah.
Yes. But not, not, you know, for three more people. You're, you're right about that. So yes, we will reduce the budget by the three SRO officers and the corresponding revenue. So that's what we're...
Nope. I want to see it on paper and up on the screen.
Do you have the old one, Clint? Why not? I mean, I can, I can go email it to him real quick.
I want to know exactly when I'm approving.
Okay. Let me go email that.
Thank you. We can move on, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, and you can get that up on the screen.
We can do that.
Thank you.
We can do that. Trent?
Okay. Got several things on the agenda here I want to talk about today. Becky Street and Olive Street is out for bid right now. The bid date is July 13. Copy of those plans and bid docs are on the table there for you guys to peruse, if you want to look at it in the conference room. There's also a set for the public out front in the lobby. Middle Park Fire Station, we are pretty much complete with those initial plans. We sent those over to the architect as part of the design development. A set of those plans is also on the conference room table in there, if you would like to look through those and see what we've got on there. Middle Park Fire, Middle Park Recreation Park improvements are pretty much complete. We have to submit to the Department of Transportation for decel lane. We also have to go back and talk to the department about the left turn lane that you guys had asked for, for the Middle Park Fire Station, and it will bleed over into the front of Middle Park Recreation Park to make all that work. So since we have, we've got the preliminary estimates for the park, but we've got to see what our estimates are going to be for that left turn lane, so I can present a clear picture to you guys of what costs are for what we're trying to do there.
Just a minute there, Trent. Now, we, I, I thought we had talked about carrying that all the way to Bill Carter Road, because when you come out there, there's no turn lane.
Yes.
Wasn't that what we...
No, that was a, that was one of those issues that we talked about, trying to get representative Wayne to help us with some funding out of Atlanta to make it a turning lane coming west. But I don't think, we never did, there is a little turning lane, decel lane...
Right. There's the decel lane there at...
In front of the Carter Stow.
There's just not a left turn lane at the Carter Stow.
Right, but we never did discuss it coming all the way back from where the fire station is going to be at, coming out.
If you come out, if you come out of Bill Carter to come back toward Hinesville, you've got to get over in a lane.
Yeah. And it's dangerous.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Can we look at extending it, Trent?
Yes, sir, I can look at it.
I mean, that...
Right. I agree with you.
I'm not going to tell them all road down there today.
Yeah, you without a U and G, if you all, you'll have nothing else to do but stay in my darn district.
But I'm, I'm just going to say that, that's, that's dangerous right there.
It is, it is.
So anyhow.
That, that whole section of 84 where it doesn't have a turn lane or anything in the middle is...
Well, I don't, I, I don't know. Did you get in touch with Representative Williams?
Last time I talked with him right there, he said he can't remember the small things.
Me?
No, not you, Representative Williams.
You ought to be getting a call any second. Okay, well, I'm, I'm sorry, Trent.
No, no, that's okay. That's okay. Good clarification, and I can shortly make that investigation and let you know something back on that. Gummers Road is under construction, they're doing, doing some grading out there, so that's moving along. The contract completion date is August 30, and they should be able to finish by then. So it's starting to turn around and look a little better out there, but it's still, you know, redways don't look good until you're done.
What did the rain do to them the other day? Anything?
Not bad.
Not bad?
Not bad at all. So we've got some erosion, some dirt in some pipes, but nothing we can't overcome.
Okay.
So Palm Drive, got plans for those, those are complete. If you would like to take a look at them, Commissioner Frazier, there's a set of plans in there for you guys, and we're ready to put those out for bid. As a matter of fact, in my report, I must have gotten distracted when I wrote the dates, I wrote the date along that we can have that bidding on July 27th, not July 6th. I've got to bid for 30 days.
Okay.
So I did say that wrong. So if you're okay, if everybody's okay with that, these two, Point South and Palm Drive, will show up in the paper next Wednesday.
Will it resurface?
Yes, sir, resurfacing. Palm Drive's got a little bit more than just resurfacing. I got some repairs and some milling.
Is that Garden Acres? Garden Acres?
It's Garden Acres, yes, ma'am, it's Main Road and Garden Acres. Yes, we went out there and we did a good bit of marking of what we're gonna do, we're gonna mill down some. And I think we changed our original design from what we were looking at before, from mostly two inches of asphalt to, we're gonna do an inch of what we call OGI, which is Open Graded Interface. It's a really loose aggregate, but what it'll do is it will help the cracks coming up, because a lot of the cracks that are in that asphalt are coming from years and years of that asphalt that's down on the bottom. There's no motion in that asphalt anymore, and so you got really big cracks that make really big bumps, and it just feels bad when you ride down the road. So the milling will straighten it out, it'll flatten it out, then the OGI will kind of give us a good separation layer in this asphalt. So it'll look like a black asphalt going down, it'll go down for about an inch, and then we'll put an inch and a half of topping on it. So you'll end up with a nice road when we're said and done. Areas that are failing, we've got Mark to pull out and go deeper. So that'll be in good shape.
Yes, it's gonna be close, trying to keep it close to the same budget.
Okay.
So I took some away and added some back, and I usually try to keep it close.
Okay.
So Point South Drive is a, basically an overlay. Both of these, I've kind of also run them by the city. One of the things we're gonna do on Point South Drive, the piece that comes out to South Main Street, we're gonna stop at the first driveway off of South Main Street because the city's getting ready to put a roundabout in that area. And so I kind of coordinated with their engineer so that where we stop and where they stop, when we're done with the two projects, we have good asphalt all the way. I hope that makes sense. Fleming Road, traffic control.
We're looking at putting a speed bump or speed hump on Fleming Road. One of the things we're gonna need, Commissioner Frazier, is the city has adopted a new policy for installing speed humps, speed bumps, or speed tables, whichever way it may be. I've got a copy on the table there of what we're trying to do and where it would be on Fleming Road. But one of the things that the city has as part of their policy is there has to be a community advocate. There maybe we could find somebody that's on Fleming Road that could be a community advocate.
I'm the community advocate.
Okay.
All right, just letting them know that.
So what we'll do is I'll kind of let Assistant City Administrator, not our manager, know, and then that way we kind of make that work.
Right, because they calling me about it.
I'm sure they do. I'm sure they do. So, but anyhow, that way we kind of make that process go, and then I think you and I need to look at Elm Street and what you want to do on Elm Street. Sometime next week, let's kind of get together and do that. Manon Oliver Church Road, this won't show up on our agenda anymore, that job's finished. We've processed the final pay request, and I think it's ready to go. Public Works Improvements, we've finished up some surveys for that, and that is in process with discussions with Coastal EMC. The Iowaic Solid Waste Convenience Center will be coming around, I'm gonna try to show you some stuff on that in my next meeting, have a good presentation on that, and I'll have another presentation on the, not on my agenda here, but I'll have a presentation on the Gum Wrench Convenience Center too, so you can kind of see what my ideas are on both of those.
Okay.
And then we'll be ready to go to bid on those here this summer. Also working on drought study, this is part of the fire system ISO review. So we've been out and we've done a bunch of fire flow tests, I think we did 17, 18 fire flow tests with around the city, around the county, and provided those to ISO, and we've identified more than 30 ponds that we're investigating. So basically what you have to do is prove that there's a certain amount of water in these ponds during a drought so that it qualifies as part of our fire system. So we're working on those and trying to get that wrapped up as well. So, and actually, it's gonna be pretty neat, I have to let you know when it gets here, I've got a little, called a hydro on, it's like a little boat about this big that has GPS sitting on it, and then I'll be able to tell how deep each pond is. So I'll show you all when it comes. I like technology, I think it's really cool.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Long?
Yes, sir.
Trent? What is it gonna take for me to get a report from you on Bill Carter Road?
I emailed that to you again last night?
No, sir.
Soon as I left, I went and back and emailed it to you.
I never got it.
Really?
Really.
Okay, I'll go back, I'll print it, and I'll come back and hand deliver it to you tonight.
Send it to me and the chairman to make sure that we got it.
You can send one to me too, I'll, I mean...
Yeah, because we did, we did an estimate on Bill Carter Road for some of the things that you...
Right, I remember the last time we discussed it, I think Mr. Brown said it was gonna be kind of expensive, that was the last thing I heard, coming from the administrator instead of coming from you.
Yes, sir. No, I did one, and I know you asked me last time, and I left here and went and sat down at my computer and sent it to you. I will go back and...
I got the drawing on...
Bring it back to you.
I believe I got the drawing from you on Iowaic Road.
Yeah?
Down there.
Not Bill Carter?
Yeah, not Bill Carter.
Okay.
All right, where are we with?
I'm gonna go do that now.
Mr. Brown, Mr. Chair, where are we at with Interstate Paper Road? Because I know Mr. Wells over there, he has to keep a crew available once a week almost to go put patches.
You want me to do that?
If you would.
We're basically in a whole pattern because we don't have funds to do the project. There's money allocated in the T-Splash that's just been started to be collected. You know, the estimate for that project is right around a million dollars, from what I remember. The board allocated, eventually the T-Splash would collect about half of that, I believe, about half a million eventually. So there's no funding available right now for it, is the short answer.
Well, wasn't the total project about 26 or 24 million to do the whole road?
Oh, no, sir, not for Interstate, no, sir.
To do the whole road, remember, because we were talking about doing...
When the bridge, what we're doing, we're gonna build up on top of it.
Gonna build up on top of it, right.
We're gonna get the road, the existing road as a base material and then just go up with it.
And now you're gonna reclaim that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, that's what, one of the meetings that we had at the Riceboro Gym one day, you remember?
That's right.
Yes, sir, and again, I think maybe a preliminary estimate, I mean, just off the cuff, when we first started on the project two years ago, may have been closer to 2 million, and then we talked about reclamation, talked about periodic, do it in lifts, I think the board had a presentation on that given to you during one of Mr. Long's presentations, but short answer is that there's no, number one, we haven't collected the money for T-Splash yet to do the project, and number two, the bridge gap of the half a million dollars hasn't been identified by anybody participating. And as you know, we've approached, City Riceboro was part of those presentations, Interstate Paper was part of those presentations, and LCDA.
Okay, and what's the progress on the Allen's Highway?
On the Allen's Highway? Okay, so we did meet with the LCDA yesterday about the driveways that they've got planned now. They are, as part of their plan, they are installing left turn lanes, D cell lanes and some X cell lanes for both of those entrances so that they can achieve site distances and that they meet the requirements for driveways that are required by us as well as Department of Transportation for the two driveways that are currently under construction. There's some conversations about an acceleration lane and about some different future buildings that may be coming in the general area for the industrial park. And what we're gonna be doing, Mr. Brown and I talked about yesterday, is generating a, kind of a safety plan of what we think and where we think we need to be with Allen's Highway for that whole segment of the corridor as far as safety for the trucks, safety for the people that are living there and driving back and forth. Because, you know, these industries do generate a lot of trucks, so we need to have some dedicated turn lanes and some things so that the homeowners and the residents that live back there can safely travel past the industrial park.
And I'm gonna ask this of you, please keep me informed.
Yes, sir, we just had that meeting yesterday, it took about 6:30 last night.
We did, so I don't want to be confusing here, is the current construction that LCDA has ongoing right now is not affected by the long-term safety plan that we're talking about developing, but they shared some stuff with us yesterday on other things they're working on, and we immediately said there's gotta be some total look here, including the fore laning of the bridge in that area. So would be spinning up pretty quick a letter to Federal Highway Administration concerning the moving forward, which will take a while on getting funding for that bridge. So, yes, sir, so as far as the current industry that's going in that's under construction right now, that plan that you've seen is the one that'll be used with the two entrances there, and it's a long-term deal of extra entrances and things that they are wanting to discuss.
Okay, all right. That's it, Trent?
Good, I'm going back as soon as we're done.
Okay.
Get that estimate for you on Bill Carter.
I'll be looking.
All right, I'll be back. Sounds like y'all gonna be here for a while.
We'll be out here in the next 30 minutes.
Okay. Anything else for me?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. So you have up on the board, actually, this is the budget that you did work on, this was the budget that was presented during the public hearing. So you would have a general fund budget of $41,031,046. So the difference is actually about $188,000, which is the cost of the salary and benefits for those three SROs. So that's what you would be approving, the $41,031,046 for your general fund.
That's the one that was on the table back here.
Still on the table there.
Last week, it was weeks ago.
Mm-hmm.
All right, y'all ready?
Yes, sir. Okay, so let me read the resolution, and then you can vote on it. Resolution of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners, whereas the administrative staff of Liberty County has prepared and submitted to the governing authority of Liberty County a general operations budget for the year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of Liberty County has studied and reviewed the prepared budget, it is considered in the best interest of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners to adopt the budget. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Liberty County that the budget attached hereto and made a part herof for the year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022 is approved. Mr. Chairman? I'm just giving it to Mr. Brown.
I was making sure you were good. Chair, entertain the motion.
Some movement, Chairman. Second.
Second. Second, we approve.
Mr. Chair?
The buzz resolution, discussion.
Just for clarification, that, make sure that this includes the, going back to the one SRO.
Yes, sir.
And all of the departments that we did not strike to make sure everyone receives what we talked about in our finance meeting.
Yeah, everything else is still the same.
Everything is still the same.
Everything else is, the only thing that came out were the salaries and benefits for three SRO officers and the funding for those officers.
Okay, longevity, merit.
Everything else is the same.
Okay.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? All right.
Okay, I have two others. I have your resolution for your special revenue funds. Whereas the administrative staff of Liberty County has prepared and submitted to the governing authority of Liberty County all special revenue operational budgets to include 911, victim witness, multiple grant, child support, records service center, date funds, law library, technology, hotel motel, jail construction and staffing, confiscated assets, jail commissary, and Liberty County Projects Corporation for the year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Liberty County has studied and reviewed the prepared budgets, it is considered in the best interest of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners to adopt the budgets. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Liberty County, Georgia, that the budgets attached hereto and made a part herof for the year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022 is approved. Those are your special revenue funds. And any, all special revenue funds are either supported by their own revenues, or they're supported by an operating transfer from the general fund, which is already included in the budget that you just adopted.
Chair, entertain the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I offer a motion that we approve the special revenue funds.
Second.
Resolution.
Motion, second, we approve the special revenue fund resolution presented by Finance Director. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, we'll raise our right hands. Resolution fund is approved.
Last one, this is for your capital funds. Whereas the administrative staff of Liberty County has prepared and submitted to the governing authority of Liberty County a S-PLOST, special purpose local option sales tax budgets, T-SLOSS transportation special purpose local option sales tax, and Ride Army Airfield Fund for the beginning, for the year beginning July 1, 2021, and the ending June 30, 2022. The Board of Commissioners of Liberty County has studied and reviewed the prepared budgets, and it is considered in the best interest of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners to adopt the budget. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Liberty County that the budget attached hereto and made a part herof for the year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022 is approved. And again, those budgets are multi-year budgets, so you actually adopted those budgets when you adopted that resolution for S-PLOST and for T-SLOSS. So those are six-year capital project budgets, so all you're doing is renewing that next year.
All right, capital funds, resolution would require approval, chair entertain the motion.
Some movement, Chair.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? There being none, Mr. Stevens, all in favor, raise your right hands, please. Capital funds resolution is adopted.
Okay, that's all I have on the budget, and I think I'm up on the agenda again for your, for your May monthly financials. So this should be nice and quick and easy. Things are looking very good. We have actually achieved 96% of our budgeted revenues, and if you'll remember, the last budget, we did not have that budget amendment in there. Now we have that $3.1 million budget amendment in here when we close the month of May. So we've achieved 96% of our revenues, and we've exhausted 83% of our expenditures, so we're doing very well. Right now, we've got about a $5.2 million revenues over expenditures that we could possibly add to fund balance. There's gonna be some year-end adjustments and some accruals that will decrease that sum, but we're gonna look pretty good at the end of the year. That CARES money really helped.
Really helped.
That was an additional 1 million that came late and was good. So at the end of May, you had 6.4 months of operational expenditures, and one year ago this time, you were at 6.4 months. You are steady.
Getting better than that.
Steady as it gets. Since that budget amendment, there is no department that showed up on our radar. Everybody is operating within their budgeted parameters, everybody looks real good in the general fund. Solid Waste is operating at a modest net income. At the end of May, they've got $365,000 in net income, and we did go ahead and post depreciation through the end of May, so that includes all of that. There might be, again, some year-end accruals and some true-ups that we have to do for things like closure and post-closure costs and some personnel accruals, but I still expect solid waste to end in the black, so they're holding very good too. All of yours, your departments in solid waste are, again, operating within their budget parameter, and same for your special revenue funds, your 911, your victim witness, child support, your recreation, records service center, they're all staying under budget for this time. Sales tax, looking fantastic. We, at the end of May, we are actually $1.9 million ahead of schedule. The amount that we received for the month of May was $981,000, so we are looking very, very good in sales tax six. Same thing for T-SLOSS, we actually received $924,000 in T-SLOSS. So T-SLOSS is looking great, continuing to collect. To date, T-SLOSS has collected about 5.9, almost $6 million. Of course, a lot of that does get distributed directly to those other participating cities. But everything is looking very well. Is there any questions, anyone has for me on the...
I have, of course, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm on the, I didn't bring my glasses, where are we on S-PLOSS six? How, where these? Yeah, you can, you... I can't, I think these are mine, aren't I? Where are we in S-PLOSS six? How much longer we got on that, a couple of years, three years?
S-PLOSS six... SPOS six will run through March, 2023.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So we have to vote when next year for?
You'll probably start, yes, you'll, I think you'll vote on it a year from November.
Vote on it in November, probably next year.
November.
November of twenty-two.
Twenty-two, right.
Because it ends in the beginning.
Twenty-three, so that you vote on it in twenty-two.
So we won't have a gap.
So we won't have a gap like we did last time. That's correct.
Quite a gap.
And we could decide then, I think, let's say with fifty-four million, we could decide?
Sixty-seven.
Yeah.
Yes, Trent.
Decide whatever you want. And you'll probably start entering into those discussions about projects and all, I'm guessing, this fall sometime.
Probably after the first of the calendar.
After the first of the year, you'll start.
Is that?
I have a project.
Is that in here? Again, I can't see that. Is that in here? How much longer we got on that?
Yeah, at the very top, and it's small, but if you look at the very.
It's about year ten. I know I gotta make the cut this year. Y'all gotta, y'all gotta help me.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
April seventeen.
I know. I know.
Yes, sir. We got some disruption over here to my right.
Joey, I mean, we're looking at solid waste, and that's your department, right, Clint?
Yes, sir.
Since Clint's done such a good job, now this, is there any way we can buy him maybe a new grapple truck and a roll-on roll-off? I mean, you've done a good job. Can we do that? Joey?
It's on your plate tonight, sir.
Clint, see how things happen fast.
Joey, remind me, Kim, did someone call you about TAVT? I was speaking with someone, and they were thinking that their funds were lower. I said, yeah.
Well, TAVT stopped as far as like coming into SPOS. Now, we still get TAVT, and golly, how many months ago was it that they redistributed the allocation of that?
They adjusted the formula.
Yeah, they adjusted the formula. And it would actually be probably the Tax Commissioner's Office that somebody should talk to, because we don't distribute that. And that actually comes from the Tax Commissioner's Office, and he sends those monies out to all of those participating entities. It doesn't come to us and then we ship it out.
Yeah. Remind me also, with SPOS doing so well, as someone mentioned, the fifty-four million was our magic number, we are allowed to exceed?
On regular splash, yes.
On regular splash.
T-SPOS, no.
T-SPOS, no, okay. Okay. Also, the way T-SPOS is?
Well, we're, you know, and I'm tracking T-SPOS the same way that I did, and so we're still behind, because we were very aggressive with the T-SPOS, you know, because that's a, that's a five-year program. So we still budgeted fifty-four million in five years, so it was pretty aggressive. But, yeah, if you look at the detail of those cash, you can see that we're about a hundred and thirty-five-thousand behind scheduled collections, but you're right. If they continue to increase over the next couple of years, we very well could hit that fifty-four.
Hit that fifty-four.
And honestly, I still think we got a huge lift when they started taxing those internet sales and admitting those to us, because our, you can, you can put it up year by year and every month, and you can see in April of that year how things just started jumping up.
It did make a big difference.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any questions for Ms. McGoughlin when it comes to funding? There being none? Thank you.
You did a good job.
Appreciate you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, and since Commissioner Walden had the prophecy that.
Well, I think we got, you have your resolution from the Merish Bank?
Oh, no, I didn't do the Merish Bank. I went ahead and brought, oh, I had that under, that's right.
Trying to deal with money.
It's the, it's the opening of a bank account in order to have it set up to receive the ARPA funds that Ms. McGoughlin talked about, and so in order to set up that account, the Merish Bank requires that the board adopt a resolution authorizing the signers on the account, which is basically Chairman primary, and then myself and Mr. Mosley as second thirds.
And that's the same on all of your bank accounts, and it is required that we have a separate bank account and a separate fund.
I don't know if I got that by mistake.
No, I think Joey made a copy for everybody.
He did.
It looks like original. I guess he did it in color.
Okay, all right.
He has a good copy.
We had to set up a separate bank account, and we will be setting up a separate fund and general ledger account specifically to track those rescue funds.
All right.
All right.
We have to approve that? Yeah, there's some stars right there. Need to approve?
Some movement, Chair.
Second.
Second.
All in favor. You may as well know, I guess, Ms. McGoughlin, tell them what we're having to do with the bank accounts at the, they may as well, if they haven't heard it from the streets.
So, I guess Heritage Bank is going to become a credit union. And credit unions cannot hold municipal funds, because municipal funds have to be collateralized at a hundred and ten percent, so they don't, credit unions don't do that. So we are going to be looking to move all of our banking, not, not just those accounts under Mr. Brown, but any bank account that any of our other constitutional officers have as well, tax commissioner, clerk of court, sheriff, district attorney, child support, city, board of ed, they're all going to have to move their money by September 30th. And that's a lot, and when you think about, I told Mr. Brown, there's a lot of things that have already been established for, ever since I've been here, you know, twenty years, where they're automatically deposited. Our 911 funds are automatically deposited in the 911 bank account. The local option sales tax is deposited, the, the payment for the defects building, the insurance premium tax, all those things that are automatically deposited from the state and different agencies. We're now going to have to reach out and change all of that and switch all of our accounts, and we've got to do it pretty quickly. So I'll be looking into that.
Yes, ma'am. That's why I want the board to be aware of that. Thank you, again. Thank you, Commissioner Walden, for that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I checked off her block for everything.
I always try to look out for the money.
All right. Now the grapple truck. And the roll-on roll-off.
Evening, Chairman.
Evening, sir.
We have, we sent out RFPs for a new roll-on roll-off truck and a grapple truck. We got them back, scored them. As far as the roll-on roll-off truck, Freightliner Savannah was the high score on that one. And the grapple truck, Freightliner Savannah was the high score on that one as well, so.
Which one did Mr. Mosley score?
He scored both of them.
Did he get a high score or a low score?
Maybe the one in the red.
He was close to being perfect.
I didn't score him. I just scored his vehicles.
All right.
All right, Ms. Chairman, you need a motion?
Need a motion.
Or make a motion that we approve the proposal for the grapple truck, and that one there would come from Freightliner Savannah.
Is that second?
A hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-ten, and that, I believe that's currently in his budget. Is that right, Mr. Wells?
Yes, ma'am.
Freightliner Savannah, that's in the red?
Yep.
Okay.
Second.
I was just wondering how they got over a hundred.
Mr. Mosley.
Yes, sir, there's several. You can get more than that, the scoring, you can get more.
All in favor? Step in the fine, gentlemen, get the grapple truck, raise your right hand, please. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
What you gonna do with the old one? Keep it?
Keep it. We had another one as backup. We'd just been down for about a year.
Got to sell it.
Do you, you want to do the roll-on roll-off?
Ready, I'm ready.
Did you cover that one, Connie?
No, I did the gravel.
She just did one. Any motion on the roll?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we, let's get it, too. You satisfied with it, Clint, I'm satisfied.
Second.
Second. That's Freightliner Savannah?
Freightliner, yes, ma'am.
One-eighty-one, six-fifty. All right, all in favor? All right, those opposed, all right. All right, sir.
All right, thank y'all.
Let them fellas know they do a good job, Clint.
They do.
Law enforcement training, am I right? Am I jumping? Man, I got to get my eyes back. Yeah, law enforcement training grant.
Yes, sir, I don't, I don't have anything on it, I think.
I don't either. I should have.
You've been quiet there.
I have been trying to keep my mouth shut tonight, sir.
That's all right.
Well, good evening. Law enforcement training grant, we are actually just requesting permission to receive funds this time. This is sixty-two thousand, five-hundred dollars that we applied for a grant for from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. The virtual reality training set that we applied for have been approved for from Criminal Justice Coordinating Council is to be used in our training section for virtual reality training with firearms, simulations, TASER training, and we also have a vest that goes along with it. So if you actually get simulated shot or attacked during this training, you can actually feel, not an actual impact of a weapon, but you will be able to feel and detect that you've actually been touched or harmed in some way. We also plan on using this system in our citizens academy as well to let the citizens see exactly what it's like to be in a life-or-death situation. And we would invite the commissioners to come out once we get it up and running, and come out and get a little taste of what it's like to actually be in one of those high-stress situations, and it's very realistic. I think you'll be impressed.
Okay.
Sixty-two five?
Yes, sir.
Chair, entertain the motion that we'll receive that grant.
Second.
Motion second that we approve. Good job getting grants, we lack grants.
Sir, we're still trying.
When it don't require matches. All in favor? Those opposed?
This money here, Kim, this would be what you would talk about, the grant money would go into Merish.
Runs through us. Oh, yeah.
In most of the grants, some of them now don't allow you to get paper checks, but most of them now want to do direct deposit, so they ask for your banking information. So like the accountability courts and, and child support and the El-Mig and some of the Department of Transportation stuff, it's directly deposited into our account.
So that's, then that means that moving everything over to Merish, that's where that money will go now. It won't go, we won't have anything coming out of the Heritage Bank.
That's correct. That's correct.
In fact, Kim, stand there for a minute. You may as well get a chair there. It kind of further brought the light when Commissioner Walden questioned about how much your office has to handle, and how much office has to handle, manage, I guess is a better word, and manage it well, than with us taking on the EMS department and all that comes with that, man. That's a Herculean job, and I just want to publicly, and I'm sure the commissioners will appreciate you and your office for what you do, and I know that some other offices are affected, too, and Joey has mentioned, you know, HR, and he mentioned some other.
We've been talking about some things that we may need to look into in the next year to help with that heavy lift, because that's a, that's a big lift for a small finance department of six people.
And then you always have a good audit report on top of that, too, so job well done.
Thank you.
Job well done. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Please express all those people. All right. Let's go down to the middle of Hinesville, the heart of Hinesville, I think that's how she says it, the heart of Hinesville, Liberty County Manor House.
Heart of gold.
Heart of Hinesville, Katrina Deason.
Finally.
Didn't mean to keep you so long, darling. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. You will, if you come here. This is how it works behind the scenes.
Thank you, guys, so much for having me today. It's good to see everybody.
Thank you.
I kind of feel like this might not be the day, hearing all the budget. Wrong meeting.
You want to table it?
No, 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 no. Thank you for allowing me.
At least introduce it.
Yes, yes. Who do we have here? Mr. Frazier, okay.
You got you.
Well, thank you so much for having me today. You guys are working hard, and I, and I am Liberty County proud.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to come, and I did hear the finance officer talk a little bit about some of the rescue funds that are coming in. And Manor House, you, hopefully you're all familiar with the food bank, and we have certainly, the letter that I gave you there, if you want to have a look at it, gives you some idea of the kind of numbers that we've had to, had to help out at the food bank, especially during the pandemic. Things are leveling off, back off a little bit now, but for last year, it was epic. It was something we had never experienced, and I think most of you have come by us down there, and maybe you see the lines and see what we're doing. But we're trying to get into our new facility, and we are, we have been so blessed to have some help getting that facility erected. So I think, come, Mr. Flanders, and stand with me. Can you come stand with me? We had a, this is, this is our finance officer, he's a good bean counter.
He's been doing it a long time.
Yeah, this is Mr. Spear Flanders, for those who do not know, one of our board members and the treasurer for Manor House. And what we're trying to do now is really get in the building. The building is probably, what, ninety percent? Ninety percent complete, and during the pandemic, everything kind of slowed down a little bit. But now we're at the point where we need to get into the building, and so I'm here really just asking for some help with the equipment that it's going to take to really make that facility work for the community. We got the numbers, we, we are, we are serving in excess of over a thousand people, and really more in the county than in the city. We actually have, you know, when we look at the actual demographics, there are more people coming in to get food from the out-of-line areas than just right within the city. And so what we're here to request is that, you know, when you get to working on the rescue fund, help rescue us. We want to make, we want to make Manor House a, a place that people always know that they have the ability to have food, and they have the ability to not, even, even when things strike like the COVID pandemic, that they're still going to have food. And we are at the point now where I could make a decision, of course, probably to try to go in there with skeleton stuff, but I want to make it, I want to make it nice for the community, I want to make it where people have access to the food and that they're, that they have a little better and safer facility when they come in. And one of the things that we're really working on is that soup kitchen. The soup kitchen needs to be a commercial kitchen, and I had no idea what it cost. You know, when I, when we, when we got started, you know, we're not talking about your regular church kitchen, we're certainly not talking about your home kitchen, we're talking about where we, we actually have to set it up like a restaurant. And the expense is not, not inexpensive. I gave you the equipment list of things that we set with the health department, the things that we're going to need to actually make this into a commercial kitchen. Why is that important? Well, so that, first of all, we can continue to feed the homeless and continue to have meals for those who don't have power, because they, you know, they couldn't pay their electricity for a few days, and make sure that there's always a meal available. We're open, as you know, six days a week there, so we try to make food available on a daily basis. Now, the commercial kitchen is going to help us to help even, they're working on a Boys and Girls Club, and you may be familiar with that down in the back, in Wataville. And they came to us when they were doing their plan, because they knew we were having a new facility, and asked us if we could do the meals for them when they opened, because initially, they won't have the facility that they have to have to feed the children, and And that's a requirement of their plan. And we were in our building program at that point, so I agree, yes, put us in there, we'll, you know, we're, they say they're going to start with about fifty meals a day, but it's a requirement for that Boys and Girls Club that the children have food. And so we made a commitment to that. And then, you know, uh, one thing to another, you know, we had to change some plans and, and our budget got a little, uh, got hit, it got hit, I'm just telling you, it got hit. And, and so now I'm at the point where I need some help. Um, but most of you know me, um, um, Mr. Gillis is my commissioner and he comes by periodically. And, and Mr. Stevens has come and actually volunteered and helped and, and we helped out in Riceboro. I've sent food out to all the out-of-line areas, especially during the pandemic. You know, uh, I made sure that whatever we could do, we got food out. So I'm here really, uh, to ask you that when you begin to make your decisions about who you can help, really consider Manor House. Uh, we are in the, in the position now where we just need the help. And, uh, I think that we'll be, um, I think we'll be worth the money. I think you'll see that the, that the citizens will be served and we have served. Uh, uh, everyone knows who Manor House is. It actually was begun by Dr. Frazier. And I've been running it for almost twenty years now. And, um, and the county has always, always, always been supportive. They've always been supportive. Every one of you, um, um, have, have made, made known to me that you would support what we're doing. But at this point, we need to get into that new facility and we just need some help. Uh, the equipment list that I gave you, we have kind of gone through to get the, the, get it set up. I had no idea that they, these things would cost what they cost. Uh, but maybe, maybe I'm a minister, maybe the Lord has provided and maybe some of the rescue money can rescue us. So please, when you're making your decisions, please, please remember Manor House. Is there any questions on who we are or can I answer a question? Um, your letter there kind of tells you exactly where we are and what we need. If you need any more information from me, the number there, you can reach me there. And once again, I want to thank you for your consideration and, uh, thank you in advance for your help. Mr. Brown, any questions?
Oh, no.
Because I didn't get a chance to talk to you ahead of time.
Oh, no, ma'am, I'm good.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, let me get Commissioner Gillis in.
First of all, I want to say thank you for what you, what you have did for the county. Uh, just had one question, uh, is that each page represents your needs?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, that's, that's all I need.
I just wanted to, because the number just got so big, I thought, man, that got to show them what that I, I mean, it was so surprising even to me, to be honest with you. Uh, when we began to try to put the equipment in, it, it was shocking.
Right.
And so I wanted to validate, you know, the kind of money we need by showing you what the actual items that we need. And again, we're trying to make sure that we've got a commercial setting. What I've done in the past is I'm using all this residential stuff to make all the, you know, when you start feeding a thousand people a month and you try opening refrigerators all those times to get out, uh, product and after a while, those, it just doesn't work.
Don't stand up.
It doesn't stand up, no, sir, no, sir. And so this time, we got to try to make it. And I'm, I'm not a, I'm not a spring chicken. I'm hoping to get it in, in some kind of order that somebody a little younger than me can come and take it on. But up to this point, I've kind of been that person there holding it together. But we want to make sure that the heart of Hinesville and the heart of Liberty County always has food opportunities. And people say, what about food stamps? Well, of course, we always encourage them to get the, the, whatever they have available, but that's a process. And if you've got a family that's hungry today, uh, they got to eat for the next three weeks until they get approved for food stamps.
Right.
And so that's kind of the niche that we fill, even with the military. We work with the military for those who have no paid dues, the soldiers who, you know, oops, I didn't get a paycheck. And, um, and we work with them to make sure that that emergency assistance is there for them.
Right.
And so, um, I request your help. I just, I thank you, uh, but I humbly, um, and passionately request your help when you begin to think on, uh, the rescue funds.
Commissioner Gillis?
Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, I was just going to say that, um, last week, um, Pastor Deason called me and she gave me the presentation and I got in touch with you and Joy and, um, asked to be on the agenda and without hesitation, we did. So, you know, I want to thank you and, um, you know, the commissioners for, uh, allowing Pastor Deason to be here. Uh, and she's right, I, you know, I'm in and out of Manor House, that's my old, my old neighborhood and but what Pastor Deason, uh, has done for the twenty-plus years and what the Manor House does for the people in need. I mean, um, go down there sometime around Thanksgiving, if they have a big giveaway.
Oh, my lord, come down there tomorrow, we got a drive-through.
The whole block, I mean, the whole block, I mean, she, yeah, and, um, just to having the heart. I mean, in the heart of Hinesville and just having the heart to reach out to people that's less fortunate. Um, she'll have a big giveaway and she'll call me and, um, she said, you, can you come pick up the trash today? Now, the trash, trash day over there is, is Monday. Um, so we come today and then we got to go back the same afternoon. But, you know, we, we support each other because of what she does, um,
Thank you.
for the community. So, you know, we, we appreciate it, Pastor Deason.
Yes, sir.
Really appreciate it.
And thank you, commissioners, anybody else? Good to see you, Ms. County, I ain't seen you in a while.
Nice to see you.
Mr. Justin, you told me to come to you.
I listen to your services on turn, on the radio.
I see. Just the same thing, you know, uh, they've, they've been a, a true pillar of our community since I, I can always remember. I just want to thank you all for what you have done and, uh, what you all continue to do, so.
And, you know, his dad was a great supporter of Manor House and, and, um, I still miss him. I'll be honest with you, he would stop in and always just shake hands and comfort the people while we was putting food in their cars. And Mr. Lovett, thank you, thank you for allowing us to talk to you. Mr. Mr. Flanders, you want to add anything?
No, he's done a good job.
He did a pretty good job. All right.
Tell you all that, that I've been treasurer there since about nineteen ninety.
A long time.
Move around a whole lot.
I know, I know.
In my opinion, this is probably the best operated charity in the United States. It, your dollars are very, very well monitored, taken care of. She feeds the needy and she weeds out the greedy.
I like that.
First she says, rescue me, now feeding needy.
I've been there ever since about nineteen eighty-nine or ninety, somewhere. I've been treasurer since nineteen ninety and I can tell you every dollar that's spent is accounted for and well spent.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your service there.
Yeah, especially, you know, you mentioned Dr. Frazier's name, oh, man, that's just, I sent on the cake right there.
Yes, I saw it, man, I, my people doesn't realize.
Those of us that knew him.
Yes, he been had, and he said the same thing, he wanted there always to be food available for the hungry.
That's his heart, that's his heart. Well, uh, I can assure you, Mr. Brown and Mr. McGlothlin and I, we all, uh, taking classes on how to use, that's exactly right, because we want to do it right and not and not, uh, have to do any time. So we're working on that, but it's good for you to present and make your, make your wishes known. And, and there are some others too who have indicated they may need some help. So we're going to work our way through it, come back with the plan and, uh, so, so it's good that you were here to give this to us and we do the very best that we can by you.
Thank you, guys.
You got it, yeah.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Yes, it's me.
We got to be at the grand opening and the ribbon cutting.
All right, thank you.
Timber ordinance. That's something with your daddy.
Even again.
Yes, a little housekeeping. Uh, it seems like every several years, the legislature will revise state law governing local timber harvesting regulations. They've done it again last year. And I think in our last meeting, I gave a handout that explained some of the changes. The biggest one is the creation of a new statewide registry where timber harvesters will register online. They won't submit notices to local jurisdictions any longer. And there's some other changes, they've limited the ability of counties to recover under sureties, the surety bonds are given. Uh, but most of the changes are just ministerial, they're housekeeping. Uh, but importantly, the local jurisdictions are required to conform their local ordinances to this legislation. So that's what the ordinance in front of you does. It just revises and restates our local ordinance so it's consistent with recent state legislation. If you have any questions about it, I'll be happy to answer, but most of the, of the changes really didn't impact the day-to-day operations of, uh, timber harvesters in our county. We don't require, uh, surety bonds upfront before operations begin, for example. We don't require permit fees, uh, and local jurisdictions haven't been able to do that for quite some time. But timber harvesters themselves will see little change in the, in the interaction with the county other than the statewide, uh, internet registry.
Question?
I just have one question there. Eddie, uh, what, what time of night did Kelly get this out?
I don't know, it's probably, uh, at least midnight.
Midnight, okay.
I'm hardworking, Mr.
Burns the midnight oil.
All day.
I was, the only question I had about it was, I mean, who's going to enforce this?
Our, our Public Works Department. Yes.
In the ordinance, it calls for the Public Works Department to enforce that.
Well, what would we do with the one ordinance that we've got now as far as, will it just be?
It's revised, this, this replaces it.
Yep, and the older ordinance is incorporated in much of the, the new one, but there are so many minor changes required by state law, it was simply just to restate it rather than give you a, you know, a provision by provision amendment.
We had one on the books now for the county, don't we?
We do.
That they have to get a permit from
Public Works, yes, sir.
The main thing that was is because of the dirt roads, they were damaging the dirt roads and not fixing them.
Leaving mud on the roads.
The same, did you do that with Kelly?
The original, yes, sir. If you remember, we, probably every five years, we have to amend our local timber harvesting ordinance because it's authorized pursuant to state law. And every year, I think largely due to lobbying efforts by the timber industry, the state legislature will revise the statute and that's what we've done last year. So we're, we're just making sure we're up to date with state legislation which governs our local ordinance. It basically says what we can and can't do with respect to permitting of timber harvesting operation.
Kelly?
Yes, sir.
Who's on this bond issue? Who's the bond paid to, I mean?
It, it's for the benefit of the county. If there's any damage to the roadways or ditches, uh, the county, the county can call on the surety company and they will compensate us for that.
Who's from the county?
The county itself, the county administration
Okay.
will do that.
Have we ever had to do that, Mr. Brown?
No, sir, because, you know, we, what the board decided to do, uh, in the original draft, the ordinance was not to require timber companies to put up that bond only if, and that's what this mirrors too, um, only if there is damage discovered and then a bond could be required. And so that's the current practice we're following, which is what the board wanted to do.
Because I know down in District One, there's been some damage done. I mean, then the county have to go back in and foot it.
Normally, normally what happens is if, if, if I find out or we find out, uh, and it's reported to the Public Works Department, they go by and see the timber harvester and make him aware of that. And it's, it's the Public Works responsibility to make sure that's repaired before they leave.
And we've done that at least once, I remember.
And oftentimes, there'll be consultation prior to, at the beginning of timber harvesting operations to see if culverts or roadway improvements regarding the timber operations will be required. And that's still provided for in our ordinance. And if they should elect not to consult with us or, uh, reject our recommendations, then we can require that a surety be posted, a surety bond be posted.
And also, I think somewhere in here I read that if there isn't an appeal, I think who, it goes to the county administrator, is that correct?
Actually, I believe if, if there is a rescension of the bond or a call-in of the bond and the call, the, according to this, the bonding company could appeal that call-in, I believe.
Yep.
Um, but I don't remember seeing it.
But with respect to the
I saw it somewhere.
requirement of a surety bond, if, for example, they did not, they rejected our recommendations, for example, or if there was damage that they didn't repair and we required a surety bond, they can appeal that requirement to the county administrator and he'll decide yes or no.
Yeah, I'm looking claim on security bond in section, excuse me a minute here. In section, um, three, it discusses appeal, appeal the claim to the magistrate court of Liberty County.
Oh, goodness.
Any such appeal, name the issuer of the bond, um, and then they'll hear that within ten days. That's in, uh, section thirty-six dash six-two, uh, three. And it may be a separate appeal that you're talking about or something else.
It is.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about, was if they appeal the requirement or the claim to the magistrate, um, claim on the bond, then that would go to magistrate court.
Right, and that's one of the changes to state law, we, the county now has to make that claim within thirty days. But what you're referring to, Commissioner, is section thirty-six sixty-one.
I saw it.
It's regarding requirement of a surety bond. So if the public works director requires a surety bond and the timber harvester disagrees with it, then he can make an internal appeal.
To the county administrator.
Yeah, on that section, yes, sir.
Right.
I, I'll ask you the requirement, not the, not the collection or claim against the surety bond. Yes, sir.
Well, when this thing first started, um, that we, we had talked about it and you might remember if Commissioner Eagle was in the fourth district and there were, there was timber being harvested off of Fort Stewart that was coming down, down all of the church road. Well, it was government cutting the timber coming on a county road and nobody would, you know, who do you talk to out there? You really couldn't get in touch with anyone. Now what they're doing, they're doing some timbering on the area of that, um, the old Hines Road. The dirt road there, they're timbering in that area. And, you know, you do have the residents that's, that's affected by it, there's not that many back there, but still with the growth that's right there on, um, on that, uh, stretch of road, you know, you, you go in there on a Friday afternoon and it's muddy, they're going to bring the timber out. And then you've got to worry about the road superintendent getting somebody to go in there and scrape the road so they can get in and out of it. So, um, I know there's a lot of hoops you're going to have to go, go through, but.
Yeah, what's, what's interesting too, that's an interesting question, is, um, that, that timber is not actually being harvested from an unincorporated controlled area of the county that where this ordinance would be enforced. It would affect the county road, so those folks and, thanks in law, apologize, would not be required to get a permit from the county because it's not right, the ordinance doesn't say, it says harvesting timber in Liberty County, but it doesn't say
Unincorporated areas.
Unincorporated areas, it wouldn't apply to jurisdictional area of Fort Stewart.
Uh, we'd have to look at that, you know, because of the retrocession, it
But they're still using the county road.
We'll have to look at that.
Right, but it's not road-specific, my point, Commissioner Stevens, it's, it's, uh, it's area-specific.
And that's another, that's another unfortunate change in state law. The surety bond now only covers damage to the roadways within five hundred feet of entry of the logging trucks. Now, but simply because it's covered by surety bond doesn't mean we can't pursue a logging company who's damaged roads elsewhere. We still have that right to, to pursue collection in civil, civil court if we need to recover those damages.
And I'm not real sure about how, I mean, I hardly got my grass, but I will tell you that if I'm bidding on timber to be cut on Fort Stewart, the last thing I'm going to be thinking about is the road. So, you know, it's still going to mean, we're going to have, have, um, somebody to police it. I mean, I, I don't know who, if somebody goes out there to cut on Fort Stewart or any, any other road, I know, you know, the, um, Homestown Road is another one that you go all the way through there and you find out where somebody's cut and they damaged the road and Kent's got to send a motor grader down there. And the residents really don't want to hear, well, I didn't get a permit. And he just sends somebody down there and does what he needs to do, so. I, I understand the state law, but, you know, it's still got to be, um, somebody's going to have to enforce it, so. If it's the state law, it's me not helping us out on it.
I think that's a discussion worth having with Fort Stewart as well, if that is a, an issue.
Well, they're more interested
And without state representative.
Sir?
And without state representative. He needs that kind of input.
That's it, I mean, not much discretion, like I said, it's just a housekeeping matter. It's changes that are required by state law. And that's what the ordinance before you does, just conforms our local ordinance to those state requirements.
Do we need to adopt it?
Yes, sir. It's going to be effective August one, but if you would adopt it tonight, yes, sir, that's probably the best.
Chairman?
I'll attend.
My convention, we adopt it.
Second. Motion second, we adopt the new timber ordinance. Changes at state level, any further discussion?
Do we have to publicize this or how, how does that work?
We're not legally required to publicize it, but what we would do is reach out to those timber, get a list of those timber harvesters and send them a notice of the changes, which are very minimal to them.
Right.
But just to let them know the ordinance has been changed.
They really want to impact their dealings with us.
Put a notice in the paper that says the state law has changed timber harvesting law before you perceive the cut.
We can certainly do that, yes, sir, as well, as well as the social media would be good.
I mean, we have a timber industry here in the county and we don't want to cut everybody out, but it's, it's still important to protect the residents.
All in favor?
All right, thank you, folks.
Thank you, Ms. Davis, moving right along. My good friends from the Liberty County Historical Society are here.
I'll tell you what, that man right there's got patience.
He sure does.
I will be brief.
Hermina still here too?
Nope, she had a funeral to go to in Atlanta, so, um,
Nope, she had a funeral to go to in Atlanta, so, uh.
Okay, thank you all for your endurance.
Myself, Randy Branch, Phil Odom, and John Ryan, uh, and also Hermena, uh, most, I guess most of you know Hermena Glass-Ille. Um, Hermena has been a, certainly been an inspiration and a ball of energy doing different things, I don't, if you haven't met her, you need to, and, and you need to see some of the work she's done, she's, um, I believe did most of the, um, the, uh, work museum type quality work down at Dorchester Academy, which was, uh.
She did.
Uh, grand opening of the Civil Rights exhibit just a couple of weeks ago, and did a wonderful job. She's also, has the Susie King Taylor Institute that we currently have a, a, a display in our entire Liberty County Historical Center, is that little room downstairs of the, of the, the old hotel building, or the, right behind the historic courthouse, if you have it, but she certainly is there. But what we're coming to you to, to, tonight, is basically, uh, we're exploring wanting to, to use additional space, and we have, uh, looked at the old bank building right there, um, beside the courthouse, the, uh, uh, Justice Center, between the Justice Center and the, where the old, I believe, theater used to be, that's now a, just an open area, but that building has not been used in quite a few years, county used it for a significant amount of time, it has deteriorated, and, um, would, we would like to pursue an opportunity to, after we've got a, uh, historical construction, um, company looking at it, to see what it would take to bring it up to code and to, uh, to use it as a facility. Um, definitely needs a new, new roof, new heating and air, and a complete, uh, clean out of that area. And one thing, just to mention to you, our county, it will be celebrating our 250th anniversary in just a few years, um, it'll be coming up actually on 2027, so it's less than six years, we'll have the, the, uh, country's celebration one year prior, and then we're right after that. Our idea would be to, to take that building and restore it, and then do a full telling of Liberty County history, all the good and the bad and the ugly and everything else that has happened, um, and present that in some kind of, uh, order dating from the first human habitation of the, uh, of, of the county, uh, probably starting with St. Catherine's Island, and then all the, uh, Historic Sunbury area in 1777, and then Riceboro in 1797 was our courthouse, and then finally in Heinsville, uh, in 1837 became, so, and then going through all the, uh, the historic towns of Taylor's Creek, Willie covering those sections, then going through the Civil War and Reconstruction, and then the, uh, and then the, uh, 1900s through the Fort Stewart, uh, acquisition, and then the, um, 50s and the 70s, uh, certainly covering the Civil Rights Movement, and then all the way up to maybe year 2000, um, but we would, basically, the ideas we've had, that's about 3,000 square feet, we'd probably have to be rotating, um, displays of different things, maybe on one side of the building, we would have a full, probably about 20 feet timeline of events that have happened throughout that time, um, but anyhow, we have a lot of, lot of ideas, and we definitely got some talent now through, uh, Hermena to help us in kinda, uh, looking at that, uh, that history and presenting it in a way, and be open to the public for, uh, for them to understand our history, and especially with our 250th anniversary coming up, I think it would be, uh, uh, good to do that. Um, that building is in need of a lot of work, I mean, I don't, over $500,000 worth of, uh, worth of repairs is probably estimated, uh, when they first looked at it today, probably closer to 750,000, um, and, um, we have some ideas on how to fund some of that, we, but we just want to get your permission to pursue that, and, uh, go ahead and make that, uh, and then at a future time, come back to you with a proposal on, uh, what we'd like to do, and, um, I know the county owns the building, would probably love, like to sell it, I guess to get, to, uh, but, um, but just from the standpoint of how much it would cost to fix it, probably us buying it and doing the repairs would be out of our, our range, I don't think that would be, uh, there are funds and grants out there available, but we just basically want to, um, test the water and see what the, uh, what we could do. So, that's really all we're seeking tonight, is just your okay to proceed with that, and some of you may know that the, there has been discussion with the city about that upper story there being a, I guess, a small business incubator, have some of you heard this?
Hmm.
No?
Incubators gum memorial drive.
Well, this is something different from what we've been told, I don't know.
See, I don't.
Yep.
That's way over yonder that we don't ever see.
Yeah, but I, I don't know, I've, I've just heard that, uh.
Heard that.
From the grapevine, uh, that, that obviously they haven't been in, in touch with any of you about that.
Mm-mm.
Um, but, um, but certainly, I would hope we could maybe all come to some agreement on reusing that building as opposed to just letting it continue to deteriorate, whoever takes it over. Um, sometimes they're just too far gone, but, but I, this one looks like it has some pretty good structure to it, more so than the, um, than the old manor house building, um, far as keeping it structurally sound and the roof jacked up, all that stuff kind of, uh, has fell down. In fact, they looked at it today too, I believe, and probably said that building would cost more to repair, to standards, uh, and be compliant with all the ADA and things like that than this other building would, plus it's a lot smaller than the other building. But I don't think we need anything other than your permission just to go forward, and then we'll go from there.
So, if I, if I want to explain to the commissioners not that they have, they don't understand, Jerry, they have a, a lease with us now.
Correct, yes, sir.
And so we would just really transfer the lease from that building to that building?
I think that's.
We, we have spent over the years that, uh, splash money basic, basically repairing that building and improving it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, uh, and I, I do understand too that the Arts Council would like some more space to have there as well, so, and we've definitely got the small portion downstairs. I had envisioned one day of us putting in an elevator and using that upstairs, but it's just, be compliant with ADA and all that kind of stuff, it's just, it's just difficult to, uh, to do, and just learning that it may cost more to get it up to speed than, uh, than this other building would, and still have a smaller, smaller space.
Commissioner Jones, for your information, what we've done in the lease, and I hope I'm not oversimplifying this, basically, it's in lieu of rent, they make all the improvements, and that, those improvements.
That's been our, been our agreement.
So, we wind up having a building that's, gets refurbished, uh, and they get a place to call home, or such time as, as long as the lease is, is agreeable on both parties.
Well, if we spent $750,000, we would like a long lease.
Yeah, but I would thank you, but you would deserve a long lease.
Randy, do you, I mean, it's big enough, I mean.
It's 3,000 square feet on the bottom, and the upper stories could be, I mean, there's lots of options we probably have, I mean, I, I don't know, uh, this, this right now seems far as keeping it in, in Heinsville, I mean, I, you know, one time back when I, I know all you remember, Mr. Wayne Stewart, he always had, had a vision of building something new out in, um, the Bryant Commons, putting, putting a, at that time, he was really gearing that more towards Liberty Independent Tru, but, uh, and that land was deeded, just to, as a financial thing here, he had envisioned that land being sold to the county, and then that funds be used to build a, the building, but it has been transferred, I assume at no cost, when it, if it has been done, or is the cost, not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet, but anyhow, I think that's the intention of the, uh, of the Liberty Independent Tru that owns that, that parcel, and also, you know, whether you use a new building or you try to, um, use an old building to reconstruct, I mean, and I know the Hineshall project is ongoing, that would, might be ideal, but that sounds like it's going to be multi-years away before that, I, I don't know.
Yeah, well, they, the city council, um, one of the council members asked them, you know, where were we with the transfer?
Mm-hmm.
And they still, um, still working on it, so that's the latest that I know on the Hineshall, but.
That would certainly cost more than 750,000, I feel sure to, to put it into, uh, but we do need a repository for, uh, I wouldn't say the repository, we'd be more of a, uh, a place you could go and learn that history, um, because we do not have a lot of artifacts that we have, and we make, make and accumulate some over the years, and we've been given a few little odds and ends, but most of what I would envision being there would be more visual storytelling of the history, um, and, and graphics and things like that that are done. We have, we have lots of images and stories to tell, um, and lots of stories that have not been told, that need to be, need to be told, and to complete the history of all Liberty County residents back from, all the way back to time, from the, from the Indian occupation through the Revolutionary War and all the way through, um, Fort Stewart in 1942, World War II, to today. Um, it's a lot of people that have come and gone, a lot of towns that have come and gone, a lot of communities that have come and gone and are no longer around, but their stories need to be told and passed on, and, uh, I just think, you know, um, presenting that is very important, and it's very important to, um, to share that rich history, um, you know, we don't, uh, just a few weeks ago, um, Mr. Williams was speaking, Al Williams was speaking at the, Representative Williams was speaking at the, uh, out at the Performing Arts Center, and he said, "We just don't tell our story like we should, people just don't know what, what, uh, a amount of history is in this land, and they don't, they don't know the reasons why it's named Liberty," uh, as opposed to the other counties that were named after a town or a place, except for Peach County, which is named after peaches, but other than that, um, and it's, this would be for all people, it's not just one side, um, of the story, we definitely believe in, in sharing, uh, the, the history, uh, of slavery, of the Civil Rights, of all the other stories that have been untold, and, uh, the, uh, we, we have that through, currently through the Dorchester Academy, and then with Hermena's exhibit, then we got Gullig Gichi, um, that tells some of those stories, and we would also envision having all of those historical sites, maybe having their own little, um, presentation there to, to show to people. I'd even thought about it sometime, I don't know, this would probably be after I retire, but, but having a, one of the, I, I call them the little buses that I see that, um, C R, is it CRS?
Coast Regional Commission.
A little, having that available to, maybe a couple of days a week to, to give a tour. I think, um, Phil, how long ago was, you took, was it, Chairman Lovett, you took on the, the little tour? Three-hour tour of Liberty County.
In the parts under.
But, uh, there would be some people that would probably, uh, like to do that, just to go to all the, the sites and understand the history, people that tell stories, you know, and Phil can tell a good one, and, uh, and he knows a lot about it. If you need anything related to the water table, Phil is your man to.
I'm going to give you the Commissioner Gillett treatment, you've done a good job selling your interests.
But anyhow, that's where we're at.
Now, once again, and, Jerry, are there any complications other than, um, just, Commissioner Jones, I'm just snuff, they have a lease on the building behind us, they made all their improvements, you know, and they've used some cultural historical fund, but most of their funds, and now they just want to simply use a bigger building, the building we're not using over here by the Justice Center, it's been sitting there.
That's, y'all have got another building around us, newer.
Same rules would apply, they make their improvement, so there's no outlay from, from the county, and they just need more space, and, and I like the ideas on Main Street, get some more traffic, all, all that kind of stuff, too. Anything complicated?
Just, I guess a question for Mr. Rang, and I think, I think really, you know, we, we can go and be forming up a potential new lease, and I think, unless I missed, that really what you want is to just be able to access the building to do, to do an assessment first.
Right, and then come back.
Bring back to the board.
We want to see if it's.
Yes, sir.
Fully going to be feasible.
Right.
For us to pursue.
Yes, sir.
I thought you had had your assessment, I'm sorry, I thought you had your assessment.
Well, we got a preliminary, they just looked at it for about an hour today.
Oh, okay.
They've got a, a form.
Okay.
That they fill, they're going to fill out for us to, uh, to do that and everything. They just gave us, or gave Phil a, a ballpark figure, Phil, you might want to.
You're an agent mask. Um, I met with Ethos Preservation today out of Savannah, and, uh, we went through the, um, Georgian Hotel, and we went through the, um, Labor Department Building, and they're going to give us a general assessment.
Mm-hmm.
About, uh, repairs to bring them back to, and, um, we, an idea of what it is, we've engaged them, the society has, and once we get that report back, it'll give us more of a handle on, is it going to take a half a million dollars or three-quarters of a million dollars, is it going to take a million and a half at the Georgian, whatever the factor is, because we, we're a bunch of passionate amateurs, there's not an engineer amongst us, there's not a preservationist amongst us, but, uh, we have great.
Other than Hermena, we only got one historian.
We only got one historian with Hermena.
We're all amateurs.
But we're all amateurs at it, but we, kind of our hearts in the right place, and, and, and as I have gone through, and I've asked several of y'all this, and you're exempt and you're exempt, how many revolutionary military engagements occurred in Liberty County? Anybody? These two already know. Okay, there was six of them.
Mm-hmm.
If we had a county museum, you'd know that.
I would.
So, that's where we stand, so, this is just a preliminary for us, see about a public-private partnership, y'all, which we already have in a way with the Georgian Hotel, just moving that over to a larger space where we could expand and more meet our mission, that's what we're, we're here for tonight, is trying to expand the PPP.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
That was good to me.
I think, we, we approve the concept.
We approve the concept.
That's all we needed.
That's all we needed, with that said, when I get.
When, when do you expect to have your report, your full report back?
Just, just for access, you know, I'll, I'll let Jerry Johnson know kind of what's going on tomorrow, he'll get briefed, so, he'll actually be your contact point.
No, him will.
Yeah, I was asking, when do you, when do you expect your full report back?
Forty-five days.
Forty-five days, okay, so, Jerry, so that, do, 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 August?
September.
September, okay, okay, September mid-month meeting then, September mid-month meeting, we'll put you on the agenda, September mid-month meeting. Yeah, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
No, uh, Phil and Randy, uh, Phil, as we get closer, uh, I get more information on Hineshall, I do want to, uh, talk with you all as well, Phil and I have talked about Hineshall, I think we've visited over there, but, um, I do want to, you know, sit down and talk with y'all, maybe we could go to lunches and I could tell you what we planned on doing and see what, you know, what we could do to.
You know how.
Team up on some stuff. Oh, yeah, yeah, I got you, I got you, yeah, we'll do that. Let's preserve what we can in Liberty County.
I'll even do the blessing. I'll step forward sometimes.
You're right, you did that, don't you, you did, thank you, gentlemen.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan, good to see you.
Thank you.
Take care of yourself.
All right, uh, is that all for the good of the order? All right, is that all for the good order? Mr. Brown, have some announcements?
I did just a couple of announcements, and maybe a pondering point. The COVID transmission index, which y'all had been using to kind of gauge opening and closing facilities, finally dropped below a hundred. So, as of today, as, as a matter of fact, it was forty-three.
Oh, wow.
So, you know, I leave that for what y'all want to do there, whether you want to try to consider reopening some, some indoor facilities for reservations and things like that. I did talk to Mr. Martin, and so his spin-up time is really fast, if, if and when the board decides to go ahead and make that change. That would also, I think, at board discretion, release the mask mandate inside the county buildings. We would still continue to post some caution signs and do some things like that about recommendations, but as far as mandating those masks inside the county facilities, that would be removed also. So I just know the hundred had been the threshold, and it's, it's been down now for over a week, and, other than the new Delta variant that's coming out, which we could continue to monitor, and obviously could back up and go back into a more protective phase if need be. Didn't know what the board's wish there was.
How much time do you need? I mean, it's not an agenda, we can make it one.
It's whatever y'all want to do. I mean, it's a
What's the level of comfort from the commissioners?
I'll say this.
About making, making a decision.
Yeah, let's, let's.
Let's go with it.
I mean, if you want to try to do that, and then if we could make it effective on Monday, or something like that, I think it'd be
All right, let's, let's, let's amend the agenda to make Item Six H, how would you term it?
Unmasking.
Just, I mean, it would be a release of the, the mandate associated with indoor gatherings on county property.
Yes, Item Six H, can I have a motion to that effect, please?
Chairman, I make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Did, okay, all in favor?
This, this is going to be effective now, right now, right this minute?
It would actually take effect Monday, because it would take that time to get, to get the signs down and do some of those type things. We try to do that tomorrow and over the weekend.
Okay.
Can be effective anytime you want.
And the, the, the county, like, the Schuman Center is still closed, it, it'd be open Monday?
It could.
It could.
We've, we've got the staff in place to do that.
Okay.
And we'd also, you know, go to social media and do some things, too.
Start the rentals and all, yes, sir.
This still would be optional, far as those who desire to still wear masks.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes, yes.
Let's see, put your back on.
I mean, he's matching it all.
All right. That's good news, good news.
Motion is second.
We did.
And
All in favor?
Didn't we vote? We didn't, I'm sorry, we got
Yeah, we did.
Sorry.
Just, just a couple of other quick things here, too, and one question for you. We will have a PowerPoint ready on the American Rescue Plan material for your July meeting. And one quick question, we talked last time about putting a firearm discharge ordinance in place. There were two really qualifying things there, one to get your feeling on. One of the ordinances that we looked at prohibited the discharge within two hundred feet of any residence or place of business, period, in unincorporated areas of the county. The other was geared towards residentially zoned areas. So, I didn't know what your, and you hadn't got to decide tonight, but just something that the board for you to be thinking about, whether you wanted to, to go strictly with a two-hundred-foot, two-hundred-and-fifty-foot from any residence or place of business, that's pretty simple
Mm-hmm.
versus any residentially zoned area. So
That gives you some leeway.
Seems like it does.
Yeah.
What, the two-fifty?
The residentially zoned area. Would give you more leeway to fire around.
Yeah.
Now, the two-fifty's pretty close, though.
Yeah, pretty close, yeah.
Not something you got to decide tonight, just, just a question for you, so we can finalize that.
Run that by Kelly.
I will. I will do that. Sir, I will do that.
I would, I would choose the first one you have, but I'm
Okay.
Joey, if, if you get that to Kelly, now we'll get it about one o'clock, so.
Ten minutes, Gary would be waiting on the evening.
I will.
What's, what's most popular, any idea what's, what's most prevalent, any idea?
In looking at the different counties that do have one in effect?
Yeah.
It's about a fifty-fifty race.
Is it?
Yes, sir. But I will, I will bounce it off of him.
Bounce it off.
Let him try to draft up something.
Then we'll do something first till next month.
In July, that'll be great. And yeah, just have two quick close session items for personnel and land acquisition.
All right. Everybody good? Chair, can I motion to?
Chair, we have that appointment for the library board also.
Man, need to amend the agenda again?
Yes, sir.
Six Z.
Six Z. I'm sorry about that, we had talked about it, but we didn't.
We didn't, I forgot, but, so that'll be, with your approval, Six I.
Okay.
Somebody make that motion, please.
So moved.
Second, all in favor. All right, Six I, library board appointment.
Mr. Chair, we're going to make a recommendation that Ms. Doris Barrett be appointed to the library board.
That's, that's, second.
Make a motion.
Commissioner Fraser, second. All right. Further discussion, that had been pending. All in favor, Ms. Doris Barrett.
Now, one other thing, I just want to mention it to Mr. Brown. On the appointment board listing, we need to take a serious look at it. It's, it's out of whack. The appointment board?
Yes, sir, which part?
Well, unless you look at the election board.
Right.
You got all of the members on the election board coming off at the same time, and I don't know how that happened.
I have to go back, we'll have to research that back and see.
And also, we have on another board on that listing, it's a board that Mr. M.L. Kofel was on, they got marked deceased, but we never got any.
Do you remember which board that was, Commissioner?
Was it RD, not RDC. I can't remember what board it was.
I remember what you're talking about.
Yeah, but he's got it marked deceased, you know, so the listing needs, that, that whole appointment list needs to be looked at.
We'll look at it again.
All together.
Especially on the RCD, I'm not sure that that board
Is even
is even active anymore.
Right.
I want to think that's the reason it was, should not even be on there, but I'm, I'm going to double-check that.
Right.
Sure, we'll double-check.
Mr. Brown, I guess since he brought it up, can we make sure that the non-active boards are, I mean, I guess we look at what we need to do with them, if we need to reactivate them, or just take them off the list entirely?
Yes, sir, I don't know of any on there that aren't, like, or looking at an old list that
Fire authority.
Oh, the fire authority, yeah. Well, the fire authority is actually created by legislation, and so I think I mentioned it last year, but I've got a note made to ask Representative Williams to try to introduce local legislation to take away that authority.
Okay.
So, that's what that would take.
I'll get with you later, and Chairman, let's, let's see what we're looking at.
That'd be good.
All right, that's it. In the meeting, yeah. Chair, can I motion to, in this meeting, go into the executive session for?
What?
Personnel and land acquisition. I heard a motion, that's second.
Second.
Second, all in favor? We'll go into executive session. We'll go into executive session.